Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is May 8, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the indication and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Cosden.
We come here today to celebrate the beauty of this city, the beauty of the weather that we have, and the beauty of the people who live here. We celebrate the fact that we have a government that listens, in which we have a voice, in which we can speak and make suggestions. We celebrate a government in which we can elect our officials and our herd. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Carr.
Here.
Cosden.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Shepard.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Okay, item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, or entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepard.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move on to item six, is citizens' input time. Citizens' input is a maximum of 60 minutes, except for the input of citizens' own matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. For the record, we will address council as a body and not as an individual. If I could, maybe a show of hands of anyone who wants to speak today. One hour is about at three minutes, that's at 60 minutes. That's about 20 people. It didn't look like it was more than 20 people, so I guess I was going to suggest making it two minutes, but see, it looks or appears to be less than 20. I guess we'll keep it at three minutes then. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was asked by a member of council to give an overview of the racket center one before public input, just on what today's presentation is and what you would be doing with it. I would like to see if the council would like me to do that for the audience's benefit, or if you want to just hear from them first and then the presentation.
Yeah, go ahead. Everybody okay with the help? Just an overview of that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, just for the audience, yeah, just for the audience and for the council. So this, the item that is before you on the Lake Kennedy racket center fee structure was a request made by council several months ago, wanting to know what the fees were going to be at the facility for the participants who will be using it. At the time, we didn't have a consultant onboard, so we didn't have any analysis of what the market was, and we had indicated that once you all approved the contract for the management company, we would come back before you with a presentation on the, kind of where the market is and what the different tiers of participant fees would be. Today's meeting is not for a vote, so we are not formally setting any fees today. It is the beginning of the discussion. We still have several months before the facility is open, and so if there's any questions that you all have, or that you want to have us look into that's brought forward by the community, we have time to bring that back before you, before we eventually come back with a resolution setting the fees for the facility. Just to touch base kind of on the funding and the operations related to the facility, the funding for the facility primarily came from the GOBON. So, all residents and businesses in the city are paying in their taxes a portion of millage to fund the facility. That is whether or not those businesses or those residents intend on ever utilizing the facility. That is the package of what the voters voted on in order to tax themselves for all the parks that we added under the GOBON. The rate payer or the user fees that are established at a specialized athletic facility are meant to cover the costs of operations and maintenance. So that is the staffing, the contracts, any type of equipment, materials that are used throughout the year, the electric, the utilities, the lighting, the cost to run, the pro shop, the cost to run the food facility, in addition to the revenues that those pro shops and concessions facilities run. When you look at a user fee for a utility, or for a, for any type of amenity, I'll say, there's really three, where, three locations you could be at in setting the fee. You could be at full cost recovery, which is basically annually looking at what the cost of that facility is to run, or the cost of that service to provide, such as a water and sewer, or an electric utility, or stormwater. You can fully recover that, so you could be at cost recovery. You could be below cost recovery, which is option number two, which means you would be subsidizing the cost of the operations and maintenance of that facility, or that program, or that service through some other revenue source, or you can have a cost recovery greater than net neutral. And that would mean that you would be looking to expand programs, you would be looking to reinvest in the facility. And so there's really only three places you could be at. You could be there at recovery, below recovery, or above recovery. And it really determines on what you all are looking to do in the facility with the programming, with the amenities, with the amount of courts, with the amount of time we want the lights running. And so the discussion today really is to just look at where the market is, where the proposal of where the city could be compared to the market, and compared to where we want to be when the facility opens. Some examples that have been asked about when I was meeting with you all one-on-one, just to put forward some similar examples. When you think about specialized athletic facilities, similarities exist for, let's say, at an ice skating rink. So you have an ice skating rink that is funded by a community, there are leagues that use it, the leagues pay a league fee, and then there's individual open skate where you have just members of the community that come in and pay, you know, a fixed rate, $10, $20 for an hour or two to open skate. And so when you look at the presentation we have today, you'll see that there are leagues, there are tournaments, there are annual memberships, and then there are individual play rates. All of those go into how we would run the facility. And so the goal today is really to get feedback from you all, to see what you all would need in order to eventually make a decision on setting the rates. But that is not what is happening during today's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I just want to mention, as many of us know, this was slated to be a committee of the whole meeting. And the reason that we changed the meeting is because items eight B, one and two were time-sensitive matters that needed to be voted on. So that's why we changed this from a committee of the whole to a regular meeting. Items seven A, one, two, and three, Lake Kennedy discussion, the yacht club discussion, beautification, financial allocation, they were slated to be on the committee of the whole. And I think that's why the city manager mentioned today, it's just a discussion. So I just wanted to clarify the reason we changed from a committee of the whole to a regular meeting here today. So with that, ma'am, we'll let you go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Judy Mitchell, and I'm president of the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife. I come before you today to discuss three points that are vitally important to the city and to the Friends of Wildlife. One, almost three years ago, our colleague Carl Vo began talking with the Florida Fish and Wildlife about using funds collected from the permitting process to destroy burrowing owl habitat during new construction to purchase city lots to preserve and protect the endangered burrowing owl. Two, FWC was receptive to his idea and in 2022 issued a grant application. Applicants could be governmental agencies such as our city, or an organization accredited by the land trust accreditation commission. The city took the option to file as a municipality, not as a certified land trust. The application was due May 15, 2022. The Friends of Wildlife sister organization, the Wildlife Trust, looked into accreditation. The research showed that it would take up to two years and around $10,000 to complete. Time was of the essence, and the city took on this responsibility, filed the application, and was approved to purchase land for burrowing owl habitat through an FWC grant. What an amazing job the city staff performed. Can you imagine the excitement this generated throughout the city? Then and today, citizens support this grant for burrowing owls. Three, today we sit in limbo with Resolution 143-24, which approves a memorandum of agreement between FWC, Fish Wildlife Foundation, who holds the money, the city and the Friends, is unresolved. The process of putting an item on the consent agenda is quite rigorous. For the May 1 meeting, the documents arrived at the city clerk's office by Monday, April 15. The city attorney, the city manager, the real estate department, and the Department of Development Services all approved, and the resolution was added to the consent agenda. And then it was pulled late on Tuesday before the meeting. Councilmember Carl Carr asked on May 1 if a delay such as this could impede the grant. Our answer is a definite yes. We believe a significant delay could quash this grant as it now stands, and years of work by the city and FWC could go down the drain. If the city then feels an accredited land trust is needed, a land transfer can then be done at any time after the land is acquired. Citizens have been waiting for over a year to sell their land, and many have not been able to wait out this process. We respectfully request the council to pass Resolution 143-24 today.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Cheryl Anderson, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Friends of Wildlife and president of the Cape Coral Wildlife Trust. And I'm here to try and beg you to take the $900,000 that FWC is offering you to buy preservation land in the city of Cape Coral. Indeed, as of two years ago, $600,000 of that money came directly from the city of Cape Coral and its citizens when they applied for permits to remove owls for building projects. The money belongs to the city of Cape Coral. Now, the Wildlife Trust applied two years ago, but found out that it would take at least two years, $10,000, to become an accredited wildlife trust. So, we turn to the city, who doesn't have to have that requirement. The city moved forward, spent hundreds of hours, met Granville, what a great guy you've got working for you, worked diligently with FWC. Now, understand, this has never been done before. FWC has never offered a grant like this before, so we're trying to work on agreement between two government agencies and a trust that holds this millions of dollars worth of money. We had it. We had it last Wednesday. It was on your consent agenda. And it was pulled because the city manager said he wants to explore having a land trust. Well, we've done that. You can do that. So I called FWC on Friday. I said, Tom Osterberg, he's our contact, I said, did something change that we don't know about? No, Cheryl, and we're quite upset that we had all the papers ready for you to sign, and they weren't signed. I said, is there any reason that the city couldn't buy this land per this agreement that we have already worked out, and then transfer the property to a land trust when one is developed? He said, absolutely, Cheryl, that could be done. So, FWC is pretty much in the lurch too, because they have spent many hours working out this agreement. The city has spent many hours working agreement. Don't even ask me how many hours I've spent trying to get this agreement through. And all you have to do is sign what is agreed upon, and hope that FWC will change the dates that they had already set up for this agreement to be done last week. So please, this is an official meeting, you've got the resolution, let's go ahead and get the $900,000. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. I'm Lori Lehman. And the other day, and unfortunately, one of the council members, including the mayor, spoke with a group of realtors at Century 21. And they, at that point, turned around and said, well, people were asking questions about J.C. Park. And they said, and they were told, and I've confirmed it, they said, well, J.C. Park isn't going to be touched until after the yacht club is completed, except for necessary improvements, i.e. updating the bathrooms, another bike rack. That makes perfect sense. Instead of having this cone of silence and negotiations, if it's not going to be done, anything is going to be done with it before the yacht club, well then why have the cone of silence and the negotiations? There's nothing to negotiate. That needs to be changed. I think you'd have a lot of people that wouldn't be as upset about J.C. Park and the changes you want to make, if they knew that what your plan was for the immediate future was to update the bathrooms, add another bike rack, maybe increase the kids' playground kind of thing. It would make a lot more sense, and it would go a long way, making a lot of people not as upset about J.C. Park as they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, for letting us speak in regards to the pickleball issue today. My major in college was actually animal behavior, so I appreciate what these people have previously said, but today, I'm not here to pet the animals. I think that the pricing structure that has been presented is an old trick, to be honest with you, of setting the people in the river high, and hoping that when we negotiate a lower number, we think we've won. Let me tell you right now, I don't think there's a person behind me that agrees that that's a win. And here's why. The facility's maintenance department and management at Stonus Park consists of a lawn mowing company. It doesn't need to be run. The nets that are permanently installed, which ours at Stonus are not, are not going to rip, and the posts are set in concrete, they're not going to blow over and get damaged. There is no maintenance, except occasional resurfacing, which, by the way, we've already paid for in the taxes of the payers in this room. Are we in agreement there? So I'm just saying that this has been paid. A management company decision puts us comparing Punta Gorda and Naples. We're not interested in being compared to Punta Gorda and Naples. Dollars and cents are not what this is about to us. We've paid for this facility. It needs people in a pro shop, which can be paid by the profits in the pro shop. It can be paid for in tournament fees, which in Naples are enormous, and people still show up by the thousands, including spectators. So, and they buy concessions. So I don't think we have an issue about raising some money to keep the pro shop going. You can also sell paddles, shoes, and shirts, and I think some people would probably buy them if they're relatively reasonably priced. The bottom line, though, once again, comes down to, we're not interested in being compared in pricing, $100, $200, down from 720, which is $60 a month times 12, or 540. What if somebody gets injured for three months with a shoulder? Many of us are older and have fallen, right? You don't get a refund, okay? We're not interested in that. We're interested in this number right here, zero. And the reason we're interested in that has already been paid for in my real estate taxes, and everybody behind me, every one of us. And non-residents, non-residents are going to get here and be stunned that things are nearly double for them. And many of them pay thousands of dollars in restaurant bills, other foods and things. Don't forget them either. We don't want them going to another city, do we? I have six seconds left. I thank you, but I want to hear these voices behind me next.
He's a tough one to follow, isn't he? Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Councilors. I can only imagine how difficult it's been for you these past couple of years, since the hurricane and the improvements have started. You've all taken a ton of heat as a result of the decisions from the city. Many seem to feel as though you make all the decisions regardless of the residents' opposition. At least, that's the way it appears, may not be. And I know there's a lot of controversy regarding the yacht club area and the J.C. Park. Our city is definitely growing at an unprecedented rate, probably more than any other city in the country at this point. We were so thrilled about the new facility coming in, but your proposed costs have taken the wind from our sails. We're very disappointed in the information that you have received to make that price structure. I'm not going to get into that now, because I have a line of people behind me that will. But I have to wonder what the goal is for this facility. Is it to be filled with happy families like all the rest of the parks, and the talk of Southwest Florida, and the rest of the pickleball community throughout the country? Or is it going to be an exclusive club, paid for by city taxes, and of course, to get above the recovery dollar amount that we've talked about earlier? Right now, you have a very unique opportunity in front of you. This is not just about playing pickleball, it's more about the future of Cape Coral. We all truly want our city to be another community that draws players and people from around the world, much like Pickleplex in Punta Gorda in the Naples Pickleball Center. But you will make that decision. You can make it in the most expensive or the most open in the community at a very attractive price. The proposed amounts, unfortunately, will make this facility highly underutilized. Trust me. As a full-time resident and city taxpayer, I firmly believe that the Lake Kennedy facility should be open to the residents at no additional cost. Please listen to your constituents' wishes and make Lake Kennedy Tennis and Racquetball Center financially affordable to everyone. You'll see the immediate positive results, and you'll see the cooperation from the players and users, such as myself and the thousands of people in the area. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. What I'm going to talk to you about is Sports Facilities Companies, which is the company that's being contracted to run the facility, has sent out a package, and it's got on it the comparisons, and the comparisons are not valid nor they're accurate. They have seven businesses that were listed. The first one's Cape Coral Racket Club, that is a clay court tennis facility, that's the only clay court public facility in the city. The second one is City of Naples, and the numbers that they gave for the price per year are not accurate. That's for a non-resident, the actual price for a resident is $477. The third one is a property that Sports Facilities runs in Macon, Georgia, called Rhythm and Rally, and that's no comparison to what we have. It's a 32-court indoor, air-conditioned, two-story property. Then the next two are Tampa Pickleball, Pickleball Crew and Tampa Bay Pickleball. Both of those are indoor, air-conditioned facilities that are commercial. And then finally, the last two, which are public facilities, Pickleplex is actually a privately funded 501(c)(3) property, and they do have free pickleball on the weekends, and they're at $225 a year, much less than what's been proposed. And of course, the last one is the Grand Facility of Naples, which is $50 a year, period. So, doing some real research, you can go into websites and find all the other pickleball facilities around the state, and trying to find something that is large, publicly funded, and outdoor, because that's the comparison, because we are competing against ourselves. You have outdoor facilities in front of my house, why would I want to come to Kennedy Park and play there? And the ones that I just found that kind of met that criteria, five were free, and one was $250 a year, but that's six covered courts and six outdoor, and then the last one just charges an hourly rate. So my question's for why the fee structure that Sports Facilities Companies came out with. What is their metric for success? Are they a fixed contract? Are they get a percentage of the profits? Because right now, this structure is not going to work, because we're going to lose money and you're going to have a dead property. So thank you.
Good morning. My name is Richard Lamb. My wife Jackie and I are full-time residents of the Cape, and we enjoy playing pickleball here almost every day. We share our fellow residents' shock at the proposed fee structure for Lake Kennedy. But as a scientist, I started to do a quantitative analysis of the proposed fee structure. I submitted a PDF file of that analysis to the city clerk, and it's available after the meeting if anybody's interested. The comparative analysis considers only the Lake Kennedy pickleball revenue, not any of the tennis revenue, pro shop, et cetera, comparing it to Punta Gorda Pickleplex and Naples Pickleball Center. Remember that there are also free dedicated pickleball courts, eight in Cape Coral and 16 in nearby Fort Myers. The proposed Lake Kennedy fee for an annual membership, $540, is over 10 times the annual fee at Naples Pickleball Center, and we only have half the number of courts. And the proposed fee is more than two times that of the Pickleplex. Proposed non-member drop-in fees for Lake Kennedy are three times that of Naples, and 50% more than Pickleplex. Revenue analysis shows that the tournaments are where the money is generated. For example, Naples hosts the U.S. Open. They collect, on average, more than eight times as much revenue from that one tournament as they collect from membership fees. Pickleplex also hosts an APP professional tournament, and they basically double their membership fee for that one single event. Furthermore, both of these venues host multiple tournaments throughout the year, and Lake Kennedy, as a new premier venue, is well positioned to host multiple local and national tournaments. The city already contracted with the management company, and projecting the operating costs for the first year at roughly half a million dollars. The city should not make the classic marketing and business error of setting fees based on projected operating costs. They should set fees based on the market price of comparable venues and hold tournaments to cover operational expenses. My analysis suggested that a maximum individual annual fee of $250, or roughly $20 a month, is more appropriate, and hosting more tournaments could reduce that by a factor of two or more. Finally, please consider adding a family annual fee. After all, this is a public, community-focused, bond-funded facility that all households should enjoy, as we are paying for it over the next 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Robin Riccio. I live in Cape Coral. I represent the tennis people. It's not just a pickleball facility. So, and I do think that it's very important. I've actually created a spreadsheet that I did ask the nice woman I've actually created a spreadsheet that I did ask the nice woman to give you all, and it's all local clubs. So it's not, we're not looking at, you know, things that are in Naples and Georgia. These are all very real, close clubs. And what you'll find is that, first of all, yes, we are a town facility, but from the tennis perspective, Hurricane Ian took away any ability for us to play league tennis here in the town for the last two years. So we've had to play all of our matches elsewhere. So, thank goodness, Fort Myers was very nice to us, so we've been able to continue. I captain four to five teams every season. This is a remarkable, you know, facility that we have, that we can actually, you know, spend time with our teammates afterwards. This is not just a public park. This is something that people should understand that we're willing to pay for, because it is something that we've not had in a very long time. When we played at the yacht club, we did have a fee, and we had to pay that fee. And we respected our court, and we respected our peers, and we respected our court time. So, the one thing that I think is very off-base is that you guys have requested a court booking fee. That is unheard of in this area, whether it is a hard true court, whether it is a hard court. It's just unheard of. So, for members, they should be able to have the ability to book a court with no additional fees. The other thing is, we do have leagues that operate at night for the working folk, and those start at 6:30. Eight o'clock is not reasonable to close. So, I mean, we would, you know, work with you on that. But it's not, it has to be town first. I understand that people are talking about pickleball in tournaments and revenue, but how about, you know, just getting back to the basics and having what this is supposed to be, which is a town facility for us to enjoy and afterwards be able to gather, and that's about it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Laura, and I'm here on behalf of the pickleball people. I think I echo the sentiments that have been made already about the frustration for the fees. If you're looking at myself, which is a family of four, it's almost $1,500 annually, which I think is a bit exorbitant, because like Byron said, considering we can play for free. I had mentioned, I had planned to sort of drill into a lot about how the fees are not comparable to neighboring facilities, but I think it's going to be covered. So I want to touch on two things that haven't been discussed yet, which is, one, the suggested hours. So, I start, as do, you know, I would say about 20% of the other players that I'm aware of, around 7:00 a.m., right? As soon as the sun comes up, we play before work. They even go to work around 9:00 or 9:30. So if you're starting or opening your courts at 8:00 a.m., you would eliminate about 20% of your potential players. Additionally, there's the heat factor. After 10, 11 o'clock in the morning, especially in the summer, you know, it's unbearable. I've seen people suffer heat strokes from playing too late into the afternoon. I've seen them collapse on the court. And so, it's imperative that we have early morning open hours and late evening open hours. The facilities have lights, so I can't think of any reason why we wouldn't want to accommodate that. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, hold on. Oh, the public courts. So this could be a rumor, I don't know, but there's a lot of people saying that once the Lake Kennedy facility opens, that the public courts will no longer be maintained by the city, thus forcing us, in effect, to, you know, pay these fees. So, I don't know, again, if there's any amount of truth. I'm seeing heads shaking, which is a positive sign, but we just wanted to make sure that that was not true, that the public courts, Joe Stonis, Camelot, Jim Jeffers, will keep, you know, remain open, remain maintained, and have those nets replaced frequently, because they do get damaged. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, we're back. It's been a long three years, but this is good news. We have an opportunity to discuss additional revenue. Last year, city manager and I met with Ken Hammond, the owner of the APP. He is determined to bring a tournament here in the fall, but we've got to get that dialogue started. He has ample opportunities to go anywhere in the country. If we want the APP here and paying their fees, we got to start the ball rolling. We also have a local tournament, The Hope and It's Open, run by Mike Steven and his gang. They want two tournaments here a year, because currently, to host their tournament, they have to have either two or three facilities to handle the crowd that they draw. This way, they could do it all under one facility. Once again, we need a path in which to start this ball rolling. Both of these tournaments are looking to have fall tournaments. That's big revenue for the city to help offset the potential cost to members. So, once again, that needs to be published as to who to contact. Ideally, if we have contract language for these tournaments, we need to get a draft of that to these people, so that we can get that resolved. So, just an opportunity that we can't let slip by. We already lost the Chicken and Pickles, or Pickles and Chicken, whatever it's called, that was going to go here, went to a sterile. So, you know, we got to be proactive. Thank you.
How are you? My name's Joe. I live, I'm a resident. I didn't, when I signed up for the GO bond, I didn't realize that I was paying for the park, then had to rent it from you. That was a shock and so much. I just want to give a voice to the people that I play with that aren't here. So, I play at Joe Stonis during the morning and at night, so different times. At nighttime, on Sundays, you see church groups, young youth groups come there. You see, we live in a very divisive time. I play with a whole bunch of Cubans, Venezuelans, people from Thailand, all over. Everybody gets along. It becomes this giant melting pot and a family. And you guys are isolating them, people who sometimes don't, some of the groups make a lot of money or whatever, but some of them are making 40 grand. I play with kids that are juniors in high school to 88-year-old men who are on fixed income. What you're doing by doing this, everybody was super excited to join this. You've taken that opportunity away from them, and if the rumor is true that you take away the temporary courts, you're going to isolate, make these people, make a group of people feel less than than they already do. So, you're our public officials. You're supposed to help us join together, and by this fee structure and making us all feel isolated and not wanted, you're actually taking that away from us. Hopefully, you can see past it and make these fees either nonexistent, like the first gentleman said, but please keep this community together. There was a tournament, just an example, they talked about on the news, that somebody got hurt and they go visit. There was a tournament this weekend at the Pickleplex, which was packed, by the way. They had different places. People were spending money. They had a food truck there or a concession stand. People were begging for Gatorade. There was none. They would have spent $50 for one Gatorade, I'm telling you. But there was groups of us that went from Joe Stonis to watch the other groups. It creates a family. These pickleball people are nuts. They play in the heat and almost die, but they're like a community of family that you've helped create by putting these parks there, and now you're taking it away from us. And you're making it unreachable for the people who don't have a voice, who are working today doing Uber or in high school taking an AP exam. Don't take it away from them. Have a good day.
Good morning, Mayor and Council members. My name is Elizabeth Baranowski, and I'm here today to speak about the proposed fees for the long-awaited Kennedy Tennis and Pickleball Center. First, a little background. We became a tennis family when my oldest daughter was in third grade. She took clinics down at the yacht club courts. That was six years ago. Outside of the cost of clinic, we never paid anything additional. My youngest daughter jumped on the bandwagon and began playing a year or two after her. Then COVID. The yacht club and parks were closed, so we found an open court in Fort Myers to play on for free. During that time, I picked up a tennis racket, took my first lesson, and started playing. So in these past couple of years, I have played at the yacht club courts, Ruttenberg, Judd. Then Hurricane Ian came along and took out War Carts. All three of us still played avidly, still not ever paying a fee. Now, we have all been looking forward to the opening of this city facility. Imagine my sticker shock when I saw that it would cost about $1,000 a year for the three of us to play and pay additional fees to reserve a court. Council, I am a tennis gypsy at this point. We play where we can, never really having trouble finding an empty court. I have never paid a court fee. Perhaps I have been spoiled by circumstance. The reality is, I am not opposed to pay a fee, but in this day and age, I really need to see the value based on cost. The fact that there will be a fancy shop, a bar, and a smoothie stand are not selling points for me. I would love to play on the new courts, and I will, as I am also one of a league team member, but my ask today is that you consider better membership advantages and affordable family and senior plan. A lot of us families budget and make sacrifices to afford sports. I could use a new kitchen, but right now, we are choosing tennis instead. Don't block us out of your new Cape Coral that you are building. Consider making it so that we can all be a part of it by including an affordable option for those of us who may not otherwise afford it. Thank you for your time.
Hello. So, I'm just curious as to why pickleballers are getting singled out here. It seems to me like maybe it's because it's so popular right now, but, you know, when does it end? Do we have somebody standing by the bike path, collecting money from, you know, people that want to bike on our rail trails? Is it, you know, on the kayak launches? Is there going to be, you know, somebody standing there looking to collect money, you know, for doing that? It just, you know, when does it end? You know, I mean, we're all paying for, you know, all these amenities here. It's part of the reason why we came here in the first place. So, I just don't think it's fair that, you know, we have to not only fund the construction of it, but pay who knows how much to management companies that we don't need management. We've been all playing at the facilities that are there now and not having to pay anything for them, and I just don't think it's fair. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mary Ann Frain. I'm a CPA, and I worked as the Finance Director in several municipalities in Michigan. And in Michigan, number one, the person who would be leading this pickleball fee structure would be the Director of Parks and Recreation, not the manager, because the person who would be the Director of Parks and Recreation would become an expert in pickleball and the pickleball community, and in fact, you know, has invited people from the community to work as a committee to talk about advances to pickleball and the pickleball courts. Two, you know, there is absolutely no comparison between a pickleball court and an ice arena. The maintenance on those two things, you know, it's not, it's apples and oranges. And an educated Director of Parks and Recreation person would never, never bring that up. I play at, I go over to Fort Myers almost every day and play at Brooks. And I suspect all the people here who play pickleball will not be coming to Lake Kennedy if there is that sort of a fee structure. I would also recommend at this point, we're just not going to do that. And I don't think, you know, I don't think there really is a need for another group to run this facility. I would look at, you know, what are the maintenance course, cost, and, you know, maybe hiring one or two more construction, maintenance people to maintain the field, and, you know, that would solve a big part of the problem. Thank you.
Good morning, Council and Mayor. My name is Kristy Ellis, and I've been a resident in Cape Coral for 44 years, and I've lived in District 2 the entire time. I'm a tennis player, and I've been playing for nine years. I'm also a high school tennis coach, and my daughter's also a player, and she played in college. Everything started at the Cape Coral Yacht Club. A membership fee is certainly understandable, and we've done that in the past, but a court usage fee as a member is ridiculous. That's the point in having a membership. Tennis is more than just a game. These people become a second family, and there's an array of people from junior, from the juniors program to people in their 80s. My first partner was 83 years old. Young families and senior citizens, some work during the day and others are retired and on fixed incomes. The proposed prices for court usage is going to price people out. Friendships will suffer. People will look elsewhere, more affordable places. Lisa Zook has kept this program alive since Hurricane Ian. She's piecemealed it to provide some sense of normalcy for us. The GO bond paid for this facility, which we taxpayers have already funding, are already funding. Time is of the essence. The 24-25 league registration started yesterday and goes on for the next two weeks. We have two weeks to get our rosters registered. People are watching closely, and we'll make a decision on whether to stay or find another club. Membership will drop, and that means you'll have an unused facility. I think Parks and Rec is synonymous with community, with being community-friendly. I was a summer rec counselor here for the City of Cape Coral back in the 80s, and as a family, we've taken art classes at the art studio, Cal Ripken baseball at Pelican Fields, swim lessons and synchronized swimming at the yacht club, softball at Burton Fields, daddy-daughter dances, mother-son dances, grandparents' day, and even VPK at Fort Freedoms Park. Please consider doing away with the usage fees and encourage the management company to set more tiers of membership options. Thank you.
Hi, Council. Excuse me. Ken Van Dolson, come to you as a local and a small business owner. When we moved here approximately four years ago, we saw this new heaven that was about to get us. Pickleball and a new facility with 32 courts. So, my wife would be upset if I just talked about pickleball for three minutes, so I have to talk about our small business. So, we are less than a mile away from the complex. So for us, oh, I can't wait for this to be done. I want you to think about what's going on down Pine Island Road. You are lining it with small businesses, which is amazing. These are your customers that are coming to these small businesses, not if they're not going to be at Lake Kennedy. Okay? And I am no specialist in these fees and the packages that you have, but one thing that I would dream of is my sign at Lake Kennedy on one of the courts. I haven't heard that at all. So, if you did some math, I'd be willing to pay $500 to have my, you know, small business sign up there. So do the math. My easy math is 30 courts at $500. How much is that, everybody? $15,000. There's my sign on one side. Well, what about the sign on the other side? So double it. How much is that? We just created $30,000, $60,000 without even thinking, nobody's contacted me about buying a sign. What's happening with the management company? They're not contacting the local businesses or apparently the people, are they? So, this facility is going to be beautiful. Some of us are going to use it, but I have a minute left, and I could almost take a minute of your, okay. Some of us love the sound of that pickleball noise. Some of us hate it. Some of us love it. But here's the sound of pickleball at Lake Kennedy if you follow the plans you've made. Thank you, Council.
Good morning. I'm Joanne Gruber, and I'm sorry, I am not here to talk about pickleball. I feel bad about that, but anyway. I am here to talk about reputational risk. And why would I bring that up? Because the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife, Carl Vo, and this city have all diligently worked for years, mostly Carl, for many years, to get the grant for the burrowing owls. We are at the precipice. Not only will the city be letting down the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife and possibly FWC, if we don't close the steel and close it now, you're letting down a lot of your folks that voted for you or would vote for you because they have purposely not sold their property. They have purposely not sold their property because they want it to be a part of something for the community. And I really feel like you're running, you're hurting the Friends of Wildlife reputation. You're hurting Carl's reputation. You're hurting Carl's reputation and you're not doing yours much good. I'm really concerned about that. And the other thing I'm concerned about are the homeowners, and I'm not one of them, but I think they deserve an explanation. They deserve a time commitment. They deserve something from the city that says, "You're not taking this risk alone. We're here with you. We will do this. We will support it." Thank you.
My name is Arian. I am here to talk about pickleball and I'm just a nobody, so I'm not going to... Everyone's already said most of the stuff we need to go over. I just wanted to spread some information. I don't want to insult anyone's intelligence. Maybe you guys already know some of this stuff, but you can Google it. Pickleball is the fastest growing sport. It's like 52% yearly it's growing. Naples is the pickleball capital of the world. We're right next door, 45 minutes, an hour away. And I think the reason why is because you can play pickleball if you're overweight, you're skinny, you're tall, you're short, you're old, you're young. Anyone can play it. It's a great sport. Everyone goes out there to compete and have a good time. I do think what the lady was saying about the hours, it definitely should be considered to be open at seven because I know I go to a lot of the parks around here and the heat is just blistering and a lot of the older couples do play in the early mornings and then sometimes a lot of people play at nights. So, maybe till 9:00, 10:00. I mean, you guys are going to decide on that. But another thing I want to touch on is I actually just went to the last tournament and competed in the one at the Pickleplex. And I spoke to the woman, I was like, "How much do you think like these tournaments actually make?" And she's like, "Well, this is one of our smaller ones and we're expected to make about $25,000." Now, I know you guys are only going to be able to do maybe like one or two of those a year, but there's money. The guy just said about the signs, there's some more money. I've played in the flag football leagues here, the softball leagues and other sports. You can charge, you know, our typical league fees. So, and there's some more money. I just think for like me as well as these other people, for the regular play during the weekdays and even weekends, I think it should be free because we can make money on the other aspects. You guys are going to decide on that and hopefully it's in our favor. And that's pretty much it. I mean, if you guys do want to build an amazing air-conditioned warehouse like this pickle and chicken out of sterile, by all means, I'll pay for that AC all day. But I mean, I think for this, I think it should be free and we can make tons of money off these tournaments. Like I said, we're right next door to the pickleball capital of the world. I've been to both tournaments, Marco Island here, and they're just making a fortune off concession, shirts, clothing, attire. It's just, the money's there. I just think we need to be free for the courts. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I'm a resident of Cape Coral. You know, when I first saw this proposal, it was shocking and it's had a strong sense of being money-driven. And, you know, thinking about the process that must have taken place to put that proposal together, again, we all find kind of preposterous. And I think there's been somewhat of an explanation of that here today. I won't take a lot of time, run the risk of being redundant, but a lot of good stuff's been mentioned today. A lot of heartfelt messages have been betrayed, are displayed. And we hope that you take those serious. And prior to today's gathering, for me, you know, I was also interested, you know, we've been anticipating this complex for quite some time. And all of a sudden, maybe less than five days, we're given a proposal. Everybody's anticipating this great opportunity to have a court to play on with the vast improvements that we're not accustomed to, that we enjoy at other facilities. And, you know, how are we involved? You know, here we are, five days into this, we get this preposterous proposal. So, what was the consideration for just the general public? You know, we just kind of seemed to be left in the dark. And maybe that's not true, but that was my perspective. And I'd like to get maybe a show of hands with the council members, the mayor. Anybody here play pickleball? Tennis?
Tennis!
Tennis? There's a tennis player. You know, so it makes it a tough decision to make if you don't experience the enjoyment, the pleasure of the pickleball and tennis family community and it's just a phenomenal activity that you all should enjoy, as we all do, obviously. And if, in fact, that we can't get a zero-dollar fee and play for free, certainly take into consideration discounts. Some of that's been brought up. Discounts for people like veterans. How about our senior citizens? Handicapped. First responders. Law enforcement. And most importantly, your residents here in Cape Coral.
Hello, council members. Mr. Mayor, Keith Thordey, a local resident and a business owner here in the community. I think today, we kind of stand at a pivotal moment where decisions made will affect not just the current, but future generations of our community. We have invested together through our taxes in building a state-of-the-art 32-court pickleball complex that promises to enhance our city's reputation and provide a new hub for sports and recreation. Yet, the proposal to charge residents' membership fees to access a facility that they funded raises fundamental questions about our values and priorities as a community. Let us first acknowledge the significant financial investment from our taxpayers. This was not just an endorsement of a sports facility, it was a collective commitment to enhancing our community's well-being and attractiveness. The proposal to now charge those very contributors additional fees contradicts the very spirit of that initial investment. Why should residents pay twice for the same facility? Moreover, imposing fees could potentially limit access for those whom this project was meant to benefit. Recreation should not be a luxury item, accessible only to those that can afford additional fees. It should be a basic amenity available to all, enhancing the quality of life and nurturing the health of our community. As others have said, instead, we have memberships. There are alternative revenue models that can be explored to maintain and operate this facility without overburdening our citizens. Advertising, hosting regional and national tournaments, and offering specialized training clinics can attract significant revenue. As Ken mentioned, the businesses willing to sponsor events, put up advertising, everything like that. Partnerships with local businesses for sponsorships and equipment sales can also generate funds while promoting local commerce. Additionally, by keeping the complex accessible to all, we encourage more frequent use, which in itself can create a vibrant, attractive venue that draws visitors from beyond our city, which I think is the goal of what we're supposed to do here in Cape Coral. Bring more people in, support the businesses, lift the residents up. These visitors will spend money on local businesses, restaurants, hotels, shops, thus generating revenue far exceeding what might be collected through restrictive membership fees. The goal of municipal projects should be to uplift and support the residents and local businesses, fostering a thriving, inclusive community. By making this facility freely accessible to all residents, we not only honor the spirit of initial public investment, but also enhance the economic and social vitality of Cape Coral. To kind of wrap things up, let us consider alternative, inclusive revenue-generating strategies that not, that don't rely on taxing our residents further, but rather on leveraging this fantastic new facility to attract broader interest and investment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is totally unexpected on my end. I'm a two-and-a-half-year resident here in Cape Coral. I'm from New Jersey, a very stressful state. Since I have been down here, we have been under an enormous amount of stress. Pickleball community has offered us friendships, companionship for our son as well, who has a disability. We've seen every park in this area because he participates in Special Olympics. So, we see the facilities that are available to us. If we are force-fed to pay a fee, we already had accepted the fact that we would not be joining because we couldn't afford to do it at this point in time. When we saw the infrastructure that you proposed, it's outrageous. It's greedy. This township is not moving in a very positive way. It's a very negative way. People are selling their homes. They can't afford to live here anymore. We are squeaking by. We are squeaking by. This is the only outlet we have right now. This has given us normalcy. We lived here for a year with no communication with people. We're in a bedroom community. You've got people in six months, out six months. People who are working all the time, you don't even see them. You live in seclusion. We met Keith and Jamie Doherty through Special Olympics. They volunteer their time to work with Special Olympics and special needs adults. They convinced us to come down and try out the sport. We have been there every single day, rain or shine, to play. I have lost 30 pounds. My husband has diabetes. We have a very typical family. We have a son with special needs who's 31. These people have embraced our son. We love these people. Whether it's this pickleball facility or not for us, we intend to stay. However, if you take away our public courts, for whatever reason, to force-feed us or to squeeze us like a pimple, we will be forced to go elsewhere. We're going to have to go over the bridge every day and play in Fort Myers. And we know all the beautiful courts that are around. We don't want to do that. We know these people. We love these people. We want to stay here. We have dug our heels in. We are squeaking by, like I said, to get through this until my husband can finally get Social Security. We are suffering. We... This is us. This is our life right now. Please don't take that away from us. Please give these people everything that they have paid for. We're paying for through our noses because we really are paying a lot more now than we did in New Jersey. We got rebates on our taxes and everything else. I got seven seconds. I just want to thank you for your time and please take that into consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for letting me come up here. You've heard a lot about community and this is a community park that you built. You brought a great opportunity to the city and I hope you care about community as much as we do. But I'll tell you, sometimes the companies you hire don't. If you've looked at the posting by SFC for their Director of the Lake Kennedy racket facility, his number-one responsibility is to maximize profitability. Maximize overall profitability. Nothing about the community.
No help first, please.
Sorry, sir. Nothing about the community. So, I just want to bring that to you, that we may have hired a monster. It's on Monster already, if you want a job. But one thing I will tell you that I've seen that works really well, if we can't get rid of this monster, let's make sure we have oversight in place. And I would like to urge the council to form a pickleball advisory council, made up of several of the concerned citizens here, to be a go-between, between the facility, pickleball tennis advisory committee, so PTAC, to be a go-between between the city, SFC, SFC and the community, and also the city and the community. Because that's what we're here to do, is to provide this for the community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? During citizens' input, to please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. I'll open up for any council discussion on citizens' input. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as you all know, this is an agenda item, so I'll reserve more of my sort of material comments to that, but I did want to just address some of the immediate stuff that was brought forward. First of all, it's great to see everybody here, particularly following, I think last week we had a discussion where there was several members of the public that stated that people won't show up or can't show up during public input for daytime meetings. And so, that's a testament to you all and your passion for this particular cause to coming up. So, I commend you all for coming and providing us the input that we need. To that end, I think it's important, I just want to clear up, and I think the city manager tried to do that at the beginning, but I want to reiterate, there were some comments about how we were making these proposals, we as a council. And that's not typically how this process works. This process is, as the mayor stated, it was meant to be a workshop. And so, the intent was to bring forward proposals that were not set forth by us, they were set forth by a third party for us to consider. And what we're also here to consider is you all's input. And so, I thank you for showing up and providing that. And that was also my other comment for the gentleman that had inquired about where you all's involvement was at in the process. That's sort of the purpose of these workshop meetings, is to come and engage the public and have you all provide the input that you have. And I'm thankful for that. So, I'll hold my other comments for the actual discussion, but I just wanted to make those statements. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. Being a lifelong tennis player, I'm glad to hear that there is some tennis in the room as well after hip replacement and just several weeks ago, knee replacement, considering pickleball. So, I'm looking forward to learning the game and playing as well. I'll echo Councilmember Long's comments that your passion around the sport and around the social environment created by the pickleball community is admirable. Not too many other sports have been able to do that. I wanted to address a couple of things. I was going to do what Councilmember Long did, but that's taken care of. To address the letting the other facilities run down and be eliminated, to force people into the Lake Kennedy Center, at least speaking for myself, absolutely false. Never heard it. There's not an intention of that. And for me, the thought of Lake Kennedy should be a revenue-neutral environment, and so to drive people to a revenue-neutral environment, there's no advantage to that. I appreciate all the input today, since this is, was meant to be workshop and open for discussion. All of the items you brought forward are very helpful for me as we consider those things. Anytime there are additional revenue sources that are available that would reduce or eliminate fees, perfect. I'd be all for that. We've had volunteers from businesses that say, "Hey, we'll help contribute, advertise our business." Anything that's on the revenue line, you know, certainly affects the need for any fees at all, or limited fees if necessary, to make it revenue-neutral. And I speak of revenue neutrality only on my own part. And just one comment was made, you've taken it away from us. Nothing's even been given yet. So, nothing's been taken away. Don't feel lost at this point. This is all in the planning stage and all of your feedback does mean something to me. It'll make a difference in how I would vote or for how this will be established. And we certainly, if you will, are the management company's boss. So, they will need to implement what we authorize them to implement. And so, at least in my opinion, there's no tail wagging the dog here. If the management company recommends something that we don't agree with, I for one will be asking for that to be changed before it's implemented. One last thing from me, and it relates to the purchase of property for our burrowing owls. When that piece was pulled from our consent agenda, it was my understanding that was to make the holding of the property in perpetuity and something that was a better way to go, that there was no risk of us losing the grant. And so, I've got a couple, just a couple of questions. As far as timing goes, and Mr. City Manager, maybe you can help, where are we with being able to make that decision and not be at risk of losing the grant?
Thank you, Councilmember Steinkie. In the discussions with FWC, there is no risk of losing the grant. We are working with FWC to identify an appropriate holding agency trust for the purchase of the properties. I think what's being expressed here is that we had to provide a list of properties that could be sought, to be purchased, and it sounds like some promises may have been made to those property owners that their properties would be purchased. That's what I'm gathering from what I heard. I don't know what was told to them, but we are working with FWC. My staff is looking at ways to execute the grant at this time. And I have been assured by FWC, there is no risk of losing this grant.
Okay. Thank you for that assurance. I appreciate that. And the other is, I realize that there are some costs when deeds are transferred, and so if we were to acquire the property prior to the land trust being established and then transfer it into that land trust at a later time... transfer it into that land trust at a later time, is the only advantage, would there only be a disadvantage to doing that, and that's actually going through the process of re-deeding the property twice? Is that all we'd be encountering?
I don't have the full scope to answer that question at this time. But I can certainly look into what, or we can discuss further what you're explaining so that we can seek some clarity there.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, because if the landowners would potentially not be willing to sell, or it's putting them in a bind for it not to get sold, and if it's, you know, no greater skin off the cat, if we acquire the properties and then transfer them to the land trust, if that can be done so that it can remove some of this angst, I'd certainly like to look into that. If we're not looking at just a very short-term decision to get this land trust established and everything moved, then maybe that's a Plan C that we haven't considered.
Yeah, I mean, as with anything, I mean, when we go to purchase a property, we'll do an ownership and encumbrance report, you know, we're going to have to, I mean, I don't even know to this date if the properties that were identified have issues associated with an acquisition. So I will find out if anybody from the city made any assurances to any property owner, because that is absolutely not the process.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and giving us an education on their knowledge on pickleball and tennis, and the importance. And I want you all to know that I really feel that today's citizens' input was, if I had to grade it, was very successful. At least it was with me. Because I don't know a lot about pickleball or tennis. I don't play either. But I did raise six children here that were involved in many sports, and I know the importance of having sports in our city and parks, and what it does for the community and how it brings families together. And, you know, all the facts and information that were brought forward. I took a ton of notes, so it was very impactful. And I want you to know that it does help me, as a councilman, make decisions, especially if a topic, if I'm not fully educated on it. So you all educated me very well, and a lot of things I will be talking about in the future when it's time. I'll bring up one, the times. That's right, you know, we need to start early and be open a little longer because of the heat. But one other thing I wanted to mention is, I know a lot of the different topics that we bring up, we say, this is what our neighbors are doing, this is what Naples is doing, or this is what Tampa's doing. And that's brought up because we have to have a starting point to go by and something to look at, to tweak and bend. But I look at our city as unique. I look at it as I look at my own family. We're not Naples and we're not Tampa. We're Cape Coral. So I will look at what's unique with our community and the needs of our community. And I just want to say thank you for coming out and participating in a professional meeting, and really giving us a lot of information to help us work through this. Thank you.
Councilmember Wells.
Thank you. I'm going to save most of my pickleball tennis comments for the actual discussion. My question is regarding the grant. Do we have a timeframe on when that's going to be put back on the agenda? Because I've had a few people reach out to me, you know, they felt like it was pulled out, but now is there an estimated time of when we should expect it back?
No, as answered during the last meeting, we have the process worked out with FWC, but not, there's no timeline associated with it. And once we figure out the final path, then it will be determined by FWC whether or not they need to have their legal look at it again. So process, yes. Timeline, no.
Do you have any thought on what it might be? A month, two months, six months, a year? Is there any target you can place on that?
I don't at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you. I'll save my comments as well for the, after the presentation on the pickleball. I'm not a pickleball player, but the information today was extremely helpful to me as we move forward and make decisions. I do consider myself a future pickleball player, because I think it's, given the statistics that were given, I think I'll be part of the 50% increase, but I look forward to that. My comment also, I just want to also, the Friends of Wildlife issue, I want to also make sure that I'm on board with anything we can do to expedite that process, even as a suggestion of Councilman Justanki about the potential for moving forward and doing the trust at a later date, as was mentioned by the Friends of Wildlife folks. I don't know if we considered that or we didn't, but I just also want to say that I would like to see anything we can do to expedite that to ensure we don't lose it. Even though I have assurance from you that it's not going to happen, we don't control the state, so I just want to make sure that we do everything we can to expedite that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Cosd.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just have a question on the grant issue. Have we been in contact with the property owners, sellers? Are we in danger of losing them because this is taking some time?
I have not. I will check with staff to see if they have. I know we had to submit a list of associated properties that we would be exploring, that they could look to see if met the parameters of what they're looking to accomplish. It sounds like the Friends of Wildlife have been in regular contact with them.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as, first, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I've played tennis quite a bit over the years, haven't played pickleball yet, but getting to an age where I think I will be here soon. So I appreciate you coming out and providing the input here today, and I know it'll be helpful moving forward with any discussions regarding this complex. As far as, you know, the grant for FWC, my understanding, this is a grant between a state agency and the city of Cape Coral. And there were some legal questions regarding the agreement, how that agreement would be applied, and it was for our best interest to take a step back, make sure we get it right as far as the legal benefit for the city. And that's where we are today. And once that particular item is identified, then that will give us the path to move forward. Would that be a fair statement, Mr. City Manager?
Oh, it's both for us and for the species. I mean, the goal is to preserve the property for the protected species, and so it's for both.
Okay. Lastly, I don't see the resident that came to the podium and spoke about J.C. Park and the yacht club, and someone being a speaker, a guest speaker at Century 21. That was me. I was the individual. Last week, that was a guest speaker at Century 21.
She left.
And as a part of that discussion, I wanted to clarify exactly what my statement was. First off, the statement that I provided, and I made sure, and I've given this speech many times at a variety of venues or speaking engagements, this was my personal belief with J.C. Park and the Park Go-Bond projects. My personal belief, and I'm only one of eight, and I made sure that I expressed that sentiment in the discussion, that as a council, we make decisions collectively, as a majority vote. But for me personally, as far as J.C. Park is concerned, until we get the Park Go-Bond projects completed, and we identify exactly what the scope of work is going to be at the yacht club, and how we're going to pay for that, what the funding mechanism will be in place for the yacht club, I personally are not interested in looking at J.C. Park and putting that before, as far as funding, before we identify what the yacht club is, how we're going to pay for that. That's a large project. That's my personal belief. I've said that from day one. I will continue to say that. But again, we make decisions collectively as a council, and whenever that discussion comes forward, we'll have that appropriate discussion. But never did I mention that we were going to do any modifications, whether it was the restrooms or some other things that I believe she mentioned. My sentiment is, we have to identify the funding mechanism for the remainder of the Park Go-Bond projects and the yacht club before I personally would entertain spending any additional monies until we have at least addressed that. So I just wanted to clarify those comments and put on record exactly what my opinion is on that. With that, I don't see any other lights, so we will move on in the agenda. Next item on the agenda is Item 77A1, is the Lake Kennedy Racquet Center fee structure. Like most of my colleagues have said, I'll reserve all my comments until after staff's presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to turn the presentation over to Parks and Rec Director Joe Patrulla.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Joe Patrulla, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank everybody for coming out in regards to pickleball and tennis. We appreciate all the comments. Just, I want to make a clarification on the courts being taken away. There's been no discussion about changing courts, repainting them, or doing any of that of the courts that already exist. That's not in our plans. We're keeping things as-is, no matter what, and we're actually looking to figure out how to bring more to the community. So that's a discussion that I'll have in the future, but I just want to make sure and make everybody comfortable to know that there is no plans, that was a rumor, to change anything with the courts the way they are as they exist today. So with that, I also just want to, again, say thank you to you all, and I'll introduce Adrian. He's representative from Sports Facilities Companies, and he'll take us through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Good morning, everyone. For the record, Adrian Moses, Regional General Manager, representing Sports Facilities Companies. I'd like to echo the comments from Joe, thanking everyone that's been here today. I am addressing you guys, but ultimately, the comments that I'm making are here for everyone to hear as well. So I'd like to introduce the Sports Facilities Companies. For those who don't know, we're a sports management company which is in hundreds of communities across the United States. We currently actively manage over 50 venues. I've been fortunate enough over the last few years to be manager of the Paradise Coast Sports Complex in Naples. Having the opportunity to open a new facility is an honor, and it's always something that we look forward to. Who are Sports Facilities Companies? We're athletes. We're recreational specialists. We're people that have been involved in sports our whole life, from the owner and the founder 25 years ago, to all of the employees that work in the company today. We have a very clear mission statement, and it's something that gets me out of bed every day, and that is to improve the health and economic vitality of the communities that we serve. That, to me, is something that really resonates. I get to use the position that I have to provide opportunities to people and identify new and exciting things for communities to do. So everything that we do is based upon our relationship with the client in each individual community that we're in. There's been a lot of comparisons, and it was mentioned from the council here that it's difficult to make comparisons because every single venue is completely different. Our client is different. We represent public. We represent private. So identifying somewhere where it suits everyone is in our best interest. And I'll share some case studies from Southwest Florida of our involvement in Southwest Florida later. As we began today, the goal here is to navigate the use of the Lake Kennedy Racket Center, as it's currently known, to make sure that we are providing it to the community and meeting our mission statement. We're going to help navigate you guys through the process, as we've done in multiple different other communities and venues, to the goal of cost recovery. That was the goal, has been set for us. You mentioned before, I think, that we report to you guys, and we absolutely do. And the important thing here is, we will take direction, and we'll advise you along the way with all of the network that we have, to make sure that we come to the right decisions for this community. Ultimately, all of us are more intelligent than just one of us, and I would like to thank everyone that's here today to sharing your stories and your feedback on, in this process. I also am glad to hear people from the tennis community here as well, because it is a facility that is split down the middle, tennis and pickleball, in the plans. A future goal should also be not just cost recovery, but also how we improve this facility for the future. So getting to that point where the cost recovery has some funds, where we can make capital improvements to the facility, maybe in the future, putting a roof over it and air conditioning, but let's get one step at a time. There are strategies that we can do to get to this cost-recovery status, and the work that we've done in presenting some different business models to the Parks and Rec Department identify that. But the first one is being responsible with the funds that we have available to us. The number-one thing is making sure the expenses that we're making are being spent responsibly. Some of the things that we've been doing is making some key partnerships already within the food and beverage network, and we're also with vendors supplying the pro shop to make sure that we're driving the very best deal possible in the money that we're spending before we even take dollar-one over the counter. A great example of this is Naples. We manage the Paradise Coast Sports Complex. When we took it over in 2021, that venue was receiving a subsidy from the taxpayer and from Collier County of $1.3 million. In the short time since then, in the two full years of operation, the first year we saved $1 million in expenses, and the second year we got to cost-neutral. This year, we're heading to that point of the cost recovery being in a positive situation. That is all done by providing to the facility, to the residents, use of the residents at a rate which everyone is comfortable with. It's also done through identifying opportunities for revenue streams through sponsorships, through events, through tournaments that we run. We also involve really creative ways of driving revenue that we hadn't even thought of when we got in the venue, but once we got in there and saw what we had available to us, we were able to think creatively with input from the community to get us to this point. So there are lots of different revenue verticals, as we call them. It is similar to a term that I like to use, is a poor man's blanket. Whichever way you look at it, if you pull the blanket up to cover your head up, your head stays nice and warm, but your feet get cold, and the opposite. So the direction that we've received so far is that the venue is, not solely, but the focus is on providing the use of the facility to local programming, to local people who are sitting around us, and those that can't be here today in the room. That's great. We're happy to do that. There are options, and there is revenue, and we're fully aware of the revenue that's available through tournaments. What tournaments do is typically happen on the weekends, and when we bring in a tournament that brings in a lot of money, that takes away court time from the local people using the facility. That's not always the case. The first example would be, the work that we've done so far is already secure the first tournament for this facility with an organization called Southern Pickleball. That will be happening over the weekend of Labor Day, and that is a contracted event that we have already done on behalf of, as part of our management contract here. So when we bring in tournaments, it takes away the use available to local people. And the direction that we've received so far is, you know, we can't do tournaments every weekend, and we wouldn't expect to do that anyway, but we have to thread the needle about the use of the facility for the local people, and also providing a prestigious venue, which you have on your hands, as that venue for regional, national, and international tournament, which is absolutely our goal to do. If we were to go along the lines of providing the opposite way, which would be providing the facility just for local programming use and limiting the amount of tournaments, the opposite happens. The burden of the operational cost will lie of the people that use the facility every day. There are other buckets that we can use, the creative sources. I really encourage the gentleman who is interested in sponsoring the facility to approach me. Happy to talk to you. Happy to... Happy to talk to you, happy to, to put something together along with the already three sponsors that we have on board. So in addition to that, the gentleman who spoke about the tournaments, we want to get busy. We want to get going. At the moment, we're all gas, no brakes. So we want to talk to these people, we want to close business, we want to get going, we want to present this facility in the best, in the best way, best way forward. This presentation was, was always meant to be a starting point for discussion. We weren't coming, this presentation was not produced to be the be-all and end-all. There is a simple, a simple equation that has to happen here. This facility will have operating costs. We know what the operating costs will be in our other venues. We're familiar with what they are and how much they, how much they are. What strings we pull on to try and get us to that goal of, of cost recovery is up to you guys. We're going to help you through that process, and if we need to lean more on sponsorship revenue, if we need to lean more on tournament revenue, then we're absolutely open to doing that, and that's what the purpose of this presentation is, simply to have that trigger point, that starting point for discussion. We'll listen, we'll listen, as we have done today, and ultimately, we'll advise you through the process and execute on what we come back, come back with. So before I go into the presentation, like I mentioned, we're really excited to be part of this project. It gives us the opportunity of a public-private partnership, which allows us, on the kind of private side of things, to do things creatively that, from a governmental side, that, that Joe and his team may not be able to do. We're, we're interested in introducing more people to living a healthy lifestyle and the lifestyle that these, these sports afford people, through some of the stories that we've heard here today, and we also want to provide an elevated experience. That's the goal here. The, the venue was designed and meant to be a premium facility. We want it to be that way, and we have to thread the needle to find a, a, a structure that is going to, is going to benefit everyone, and the last thing we want to do is, is prevent people having access to the facility. as we go through this, the, the purpose of this will be to provide the rationale behind the, the figures that we had. The first, the first point is, is I mentioned, is it's a premium facility that should be accessible to all. There'll be resident pricing, but ultimately, the most cost-effective way, and the best value way of participating at the Lake Kennedy Racket Center would be through memberships. There would be options for daily drop-in play, options for court rental, clinics and leagues, and also tournaments. So this is specifically designed to present the actual use of the facility. We're not going to cover the things such as what we value the court sponsorship to be and things like that. Also, we're going to lean on the, the people that we're hiring to define and create packages for the clinics and leagues for this, this, for this facility. I am very excited to, hopefully in the next few days, be able to announce a local resident as a general manager of the facility, who we have been through our, our interview process with. We're excited. Typically, we, we hire people from outside of a location, and, because we want to find the, the absolute right fit for the, for the person, and for this community, we felt that a local resident would be, would be the best option for that. Once the offer letter is signed, we can announce, but that was an exciting thing that we, that we're going to announce very soon. The pricing structure for Lake Kennedy would be designed to provide deep discounts for the, for the local residents. Whatever the starting point for that would be, if you're a non-resident, you would expect to pay more than, than a, than, than a resident. The price point would also need to take into account that it is a premium facility. There are very few facilities like this in the country. The option, the comparisons that were put here were a variety of public and private venues, a variety of indoor and outdoor. Just to provide some, some background, there's some that we recognize are extremely cost, cost-effective for the users. When you look at it from a grand scheme of things, those facilities are likely to be supported with a subsidy from the taxpayer, the taxpayer of the whole, if they are a, a public venue, or if they're a private venue, there will be an owner or an investor there that will be picking up the difference. The membership structures, we had, we had a plan to put together a family package, but ultimately, in the structure that we put, the student would also be the concession rate. So when you put those numbers together, it still worked out more cost-effective, rather than add the, the confusion of multiple different rates. So the, the rationale here was an individual rate, a resident getting 40% discount than an, over a non-resident in both that. Ultimately, we looked at it from an annual perspective. If you're a resident, at $540 per year, if you visit the venue four times a month, then that's likely to be less than $10 per visit, which is, is a pretty standard fee for a drop-in rate at most venues. Like I mentioned, the most cost-effective access would be through memberships. The memberships would provide benefits. We are stocking the pro shop with items that people will benefit from, they will want to buy. The plan through this is that members would get a discount in the pro shop, members would get a discount through the concession stand, members would get access to club tournaments, and the, the, the members would, would also participate in the program without an initiation fee, which is, is pretty, people will be familiar with that with most kind of businesses that offer a membership, such as gyms and, and some racket facilities. We wanted to avoid having an initiation fee. The daily drop-in fee, this is, there's no additional benefits. That means this is for people who aren't members. So if you just drop in and you want to play, there are no additional benefits, other than using a premium facility. There's peak hours and off-peak hours. The peak hours for Cape Coral residents would be, in this model, a $15 drop-in fee. Off-peak, there would be no fee. For individual, for, for non-residents in this model, this would be a $25 drop-in fee with $10 for, for off-peak rates. That would be what we would consider the entry-level access to the facility. You park, you drive up, you've never been here before, you want to try the facility out. This would be the, the model that you would use before you learned about the value of being a member and ultimately end up being one. The hours, a lot of discussion about the hours. We're in Florida, we run sports facilities, we know that it's, it gets hot. Again, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a model of trying to thread the needle, and we will take direction, and we're listening to the people that play, that play pickleball and play tennis. We hear that. Ultimately, we have neighbors as well, and it's important to take into account the, take into account that. So we will lean on the direction, the operational structure of the facility again. All of this in this presentation, none of this is our recommendation at the moment. We're here for discussion, we're here to learn, and we're here to, we're here to, to provide that. But ultimately, the operational hours were discussed with Parks and Rec, but these were suggestions, and just the same with the membership rates. These are for, for a decision to be made and, and direction to be taken. Lot of conversation about members having to, if they wanted to reserve a court, having an additional fee for that. We find with a lot of facilities, not just court facilities, but field facilities as well, is that when the ability to rent a facility or any kind of asset where people don't necessarily have skin in the game, then there is the, there is the challenge and the chance that the court goes unused. The ability for people to rent a court, a court facility, reserve it and not use it, means it's being taken away from someone else. So the rationale behind a fee for peak-time court rentals was based upon that. The opposite to that is, we provide the ability for members to rent the courts for free. There still needs to be a policy and a procedure in place to ensure that, that policy is not being abused by anyone of the members and taking away court time that could be available to other people. Again, we're very open to that, we're open to the rental times, and note that during the off-peak hours for members in this model, there is no court fee rental, court rental fee. Through a court rental, that would be the only way to guarantee court, the court facility. For those who have been to the Naples facility, you'll see that most of the time is on a drop-in basis, and it's a wait-to-play situation where there's a rotation around the courts. That would be a model that would be, would be suggested at this venue, and giving people the opportunity to reserve a court during those peak times is, is also in here as well. Clinics and leagues, I mentioned earlier. We do have a, a couple of local people that we have tapped to be involved in this project, who are very familiar with running clinics and running leagues, and we're looking forward to involving them to create what the packages would look like. In this model, the pricing is to be determined, but ultimately, access to members, again, that's the theme here, the members will get the best value and get the priority for being, participating in clinics and in leagues. The final part of it is the tournaments. There's two types of tournaments we can run. There's venue-operated ones, which we run ourselves, and there's third-party operated ones. A cool idea that we had was a club tournament for both tennis and pickleball, to identify in different categories of play and different brackets, membership champions, club champions, and looking to put tournaments into shoulder seasons that help us drive economic impact into the local area as well. So member entry discounts to tournaments, and third-party operated tournaments would be based upon that they would pay a, a fee to rent the facility from us. We would identify a minimum amount of courts that they would need to rent, and a minimum amount of time they need to rent. So we would offer the ability for third-party operators to have multi-year contracts. Our policy within our organization with our contracting is, is, is pretty standard, that multi-year contracts identify the dates, but each year, there is an option based upon the performance of the operator, if that's, if, if, if we want to move on with that, that partnership, or if we would like to go in a different direction. That flexibility allows us to drive the best deal for our client in our, in our different communities that, that we serve. That's it from me, from terms of the presentation. Covered a lot, spoken a lot. I'm really interested to learn more about what you guys have to offer in terms of direction. Super excited to be involved in this, and I'd like to make myself welcome, make, make myself available, and you're welcome to ask questions, and that's the same for the people sitting around here as well, after the event. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'll open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for the presentation. First of all, I have played pickleball, and I was a high school tennis coach for three years, so these are two sports that are very familiar to me. Mike, I, I can't remember if we've had this discussion, what are we actually paying the management company to run the, to run the centers? And if you could make it similar to how maybe ProParks works, or how Trune works, is it a, is a similar structure where they're...
I will let the Parks Director...
Or Joe? Okay.
Yeah, the agreement with SFC is we're paying them 227, 222,000 a year to run that, and with Trune, I think we're at 125, 125,000.
Now, are they getting a percentage of revenue?
For SFC, there is no revenue incentives or anything. This, all the money goes back into the general fund as our revenue.
Even tournament?
Yeah.
Even terms of, we're just, there, our only fee to them is 220?
222, 222,000.
222,000, okay.
18,700, 500 a month.
Okay. And then, back to the presenter, how did you arrive at your costs? Is this, is this to cover all of your operating or management costs to get to cost recovery? Or how, how did you arrive at, at these fees?
We looked at what we feel the operational cost of the facility would be. When we take into account all of the fees that we looked at in comparable venues that we manage, and the industry knowledge that, that, that our team has, we created a model that helps us get to that point, get to the, the cost recovery model that has been directed so far. What this doesn't take into account, that we have taken into account in the, in the models that we've created, is the revenue that is driven from sponsorship, that is driven from, from, from new, from new creative sources, such as rebates from vendors. And ultimately, the ability for us to write a final budget is based upon the direction that we receive from council, on the buckets that we fill, where the revenue comes from in those, in those particular buckets.
Yeah, and I know this is just a starting point, but we also know that these courts will be in high demand for tournaments. We've already got them lining up. We know, based on conversations today, that there will be a lot of sponsorship opportunities, or might even be facility naming right opportunities available through this whole, through this whole thing.
Yep, and if I, if I could, that's again why we're here. We're helped, we're here to help you navigate through those, those negotiations. Multiple of our venues across the country, we've, we've, we've negotiated and created the best deal possible for our clients when it comes to sponsorships from a banner on the side of, banner on the side of a field to the naming rights of an entire facility.
Right, and obviously with the Naples facility, you can look at their $50 membership fee. We also know they host the US Open, which brings in thousands of players every year, and I know that can help with, with costs as well. We know that tournament play is going to generate a lot of revenue, and based on all that, I believe the fees are way too high. I'm looking at...
Please tell pause.
If you, if you compare Naples, the Pickleplex, Patch Reef, Altamonte Springs, Pictona at Holly Hill, I think a more fair membership, at least for me, would be $200 a year, and $400 for, for family. No court rental fee for members. If you want to look at reserving a certain number of courts each day because of a high membership count, you can do that, and then have, have a number of courts available for drop-in play. For me, a drop-in fee that's fair is $6, based on what they're charging at the, at the other facilities that we might, we might be able to compare to. When Joe and I first started our discussions, and I'll go back to the first conversation we had, was, we had it at the Burrowing Out Festival, was, well, I thought all these courts were going to be free. Well, what I wasn't looking at was operational costs and management costs. This is, as the city manager mentioned at the beginning, a specialized facility, and every specialized facility that, that I know of charges some sort of fee, but, but it has to work for the residents. The go, the go, the go bond was to build the courts. The go bond was to build the facility. You know, this, this is something separate now, but it needs to be reasonable. So as we talked through it, I said, is there available, is there availability for free play at some point, either every day, especially in the summertime, where we know the courts may not be used from 1 to 6 when it's hot, to open the courts up for free, for free play during that time, knowing that it may get a lot of use, but there will be play. If you're on a court for 45 minutes to an hour... If you're on a court for 45 minutes to an hour in the summertime, we know there's refreshments available, and each person has to monitor their own health. But I think there are a lot of options here for free play beyond the membership rate, beyond the individual drop-in fees. We know that league play, especially for tennis, is a big deal because we know league play took place at the yacht club. We know league play takes place all over Lee County, especially with the women, at the Forest, at the Landings, all those places. So, all that is factored in. And when I talk about these fees at $200, that goes over to tennis as well. I'm not looking at different fees here for structure. We know a lot of pickleball players, they show up. It's a different world out there for them. They put their paddles in a fence or a holder, and you play one game, and you're off the court and the next group is in. So, I know you probably see that play happen at Naples and all that. Now, that could be member play, it could be drop-in play. So, there's a lot to take into account here. During the season, as far as times go, you know, starting at... I don't know that I have a big problem starting at 7:00, although it's in the... From October to through April, we know it's going to be fairly cool in the mornings. So, starting at 8:00 wouldn't necessarily be bad. Maybe in the summertime, we start at 7:00, because we know it gets hot out a lot earlier. It's light out by then. In season, it's dark by 6:00. Keeping the courts open until 8:00 seems fair in the summertime. It's light out till 8:30. You know, I think there's a lot of flexibility in how we look at the times. Although you did mention the neighbors, and we do have to take that into consideration in the evening with the lights on. We know there's great buffering there for those that may not like the sound, and I love the sound of a pickleball or a tennis ball. But we know the neighbors, at least with the lights, you know, that has to be a factor. But I think moving forward, whatever we decide the initial fee should be, you know, as these courts become more popular for tournaments, for a league player, whatever, this fee structure could, you know, based on my model, could change, where, you know, membership fees are less. Maybe one day, they get down to where Naples is. But as you look at the fees, the Pickleplex, $225. Tampa, you know, $199. Patch Reef, $190 for an adult, $254 for a family. Pictona seemed to be one of the higher ones at $400 to $600 for an individual. But, you know, for me, to make it fair for everybody would be a $200 membership, $400 for family, $6 for drop-in play. So, I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden said a lot of the things that I was going to say, so I'm just going to be quick with it. I think we need to get more closer to a $5 drop-in fee. You know, lean more on sponsorships and tournaments to get back to that cost recovery. I do want to get the cost recovery, and I want it to be something that costs residents more than what it currently is. A membership fee, I agree, $200 a year is a fair place to start. And if you want to do a family for four, that's fine. But I see that you had the student in here, so a family could be different. So, that is a unique challenge that I trust you guys have worked through. But as far as my numbers go, I think $5 drop-in, even six, like you said, would be fair, and $200 would be the max, I think, for the community to aim for. I like the fact that you have the times off-peak and peak. And off-peak, there is no cost to use the courts. And I would support maybe a 7:00 AM during the summer hours opening time, because it does get hot quick. And other than that, thank you for the presentation. I know this is the first step to it, so I look forward to seeing how you take all of the citizens' input and the input you get from us, and come back with another model for us to look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard.
Yes, I have a question for staff. Do we have the ability, or are there plans to put like electronic billboards there that space can be sold for revenue? And then, another, I am interested in the time changes also. And the other question I had, this is basically for people watching at home. Can you tell us how many tennis courts and pickleball courts we have that are throughout the city at this time, at all our other parks, that won't have any fees at all? And how many of them are open now? And if there are add-ons that are coming, if you can give us that number as well?
Yeah, in regards to opportunities for electronic boards, I think there's opportunities to do anything we want to do, we just have to figure out how to get it done. So, I think that's the key point, is what do we really want the facility to be? What do we want it to look like, and how do we make it work for the facility? On our courts, I just wanted to make sure I'm 100% right. I sent this to you yesterday in regards to it. We do have shared courts, and we also do have courts that are standalone. Lately, we've been building courts that are more standalone, because there does seem to be a lot of overlap when people want to play tennis, and there are people who are playing pickleball, and we don't really get that total inclusion of everybody being able to play at the same time. So, if they're out there playing pickleball, there's no way people can go in and play tennis, and that's a lot of complaints I get. So, I like the direction we're going with on saying that we're trying to build them separately, which we've done at Sands and Gator just most recently. So, for right now, we have a total of 22 pickleball courts altogether, and that's whether or not they're single courts or combined. And we have 10 tennis courts, single courts or combined. Single courts for pickleball, we have eight. And for single courts for tennis, we have four. So, that leaves six dual courts on tennis, and 14 dual courts for pickleball at this point. Adding these coming up, we have coming with the Racket Center. We had another 12 tennis and 32 pickleball. And we're in the design phase at Veterans Park for two more tennis courts to help offset the loss of the yacht club at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, with regard to tournament play, what's the structure of those tournaments? Are they a weekend, two-day tournament? Do they start Friday evening? How much of an impact is it on the membership when the tournament comes in?
It varies. For example, I can use a real-time example of the tournament that we've secured with Southern Pickleball. That's going to be over Labor Day of five days. Five days encompassing a number of brackets, age brackets, doubles, singles, open play. The maximum amount of courts that they've secured at any one time is 24. So, it's 16, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Thursday? Yeah, it's a five-day tournament in total, with two days requiring 24 courts of the 32, and the rest of the day 16. But it will vary from the size of the venue, size of the tournament, to the type of the tournament.
Okay. I think we all believe that that's going to be a part of the future of this facility because of the size and the uniqueness of it.
Yeah.
And premier, as I think is the word you've used. But the significant impact on a membership, I want to consider that as well with related to the fees moving forward. Related to fees, I'm not going to offer any numbers. I don't have enough knowledge to do that. I do agree it's significantly higher than I expected. I'm not going to offer a number. If I had to give a number, I would say anywhere between zero and half of what we've already been given as a range is what I would like to see. I'd also like to consider, or at least discuss, and have some more information given about separation of tennis and pickleball with regard to fees. I have no concept about the differences associated with the costs to play. I agree that, you know, the comparison with an ice skating rink is dramatically different as it is golf and other, you know, amenities that we may be able to offer. But we'd like to know some more about the differentiation between tennis and pickleball, and maybe the fee structure associated with that, and if there is a benefit to separating it moving forward. Times, I absolutely agree, we should expand the times earlier and later. I don't believe lighting will be an impact on the neighbor. I can tell you, as an adjacent neighbor to a baseball complex here in the city, with the new lighting, non-issue with regard to lighting impact. I think noise would probably be our issue for impact on neighbors. I'm interested to see how that is going forward. But I think we could do things to mitigate that if we find that that's a significant problem as we go forward. Alls I've heard about is the noise issues other locations. I haven't experienced it myself, so I have no basis to reference on the noise. I like the idea of a family rate as well. I don't know what that would be, but I do agree. Simplify it, make it a flat rate regardless of the size of family. I think it makes a difference. I mean, if you have six kids. I think that's rare these days to have a large family like that. But I think, you know, if you do have that, I'd like to simplify it. Just have a family rate if possible. Consider a senior rate. And again, these are, depending on what the number is, as for everyone else, may negate the need for any other discounts for other groups within our city. But I'm open to all that to get the costs lower. I like the idea of a committee. I don't know, Mike, how you feel about it from a manager perspective, but I know, I think it worked well with the golf course when we were operating it. I don't know where we stand with that today. But I think the growth of the sport, the interest of the sport, I think, and from a revenue perspective, the numbers are only going to get greater. I think that probably had a lot to do with your success in Naples. You know, you talked about your track record regarding, you know, going from a negative operating facility to a cost-neutral or even a profitability has a lot to do with the growth. And I'm sure you would agree, it's not just your capabilities. I'm sure they're great. But I think the growth of this sport is going to help us from a revenue side as well.
Okay. If I could, just for clarification, our organization does not manage the Naples Pickleball Center. This is the Paradise Coast Sports Complex.
Okay.
There's no court facilities at that facility.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Free hours on a weekly basis, I think that's a great idea from Councilmember Hayden. I think there are dead hours in any sport. If there are dead hours, I'd like to fill it with free time, expose people to the sport, give an opportunity to expand our business and fees coming in at later dates. So, I like that idea as well. Those are all the comments I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could add comment to the tournaments. One of the roles that we provide to the communities that we serve is try to drive economic impact into local areas. That's money being spent by people who aren't in from the local area, and that comes through tournaments. There is a direct economic impact of the individuals staying in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, getting their cars up in our gas stations. But there's also an indirect impact, a direct impact of the employment opportunities that this venue will provide people. And as I mentioned before, we're looking to hire local. So, the people who are earning money from this facility are turning that money back into the community as well, so.
Mr. City Manager.
Can I add just a little bit to this as well? Mike, go ahead, Mike. I can go after.
Just a couple items. So, Councilmember Carr, when we were designing the facility, one of the speakers had put together a group, or we worked together, and we had a stakeholders committee, stakeholders group from a city management perspective on designing the facility. It involved actually going to tournaments, meeting with the tournament host, meeting with the tournament provider, meeting with the APP tour, meeting with the players, the pros, the locals. We took in input from the entire pickleball community, and all of that input went into the facility that we're delivering to the community today. So, a couple of things related to that. Tournaments were definitely always considered. We went to a tournament with our design team to get that input on what we needed to do in order to be successful recruiting tournaments or hosting tournaments in the Cape. From a sound perspective, in lieu of just a vegetative buffer, we actually have an earthen berm on the northern part of the entire facility. So, in lieu of just going with some bushes and trying to think that they would help, we actually have a built-up earthen berm to deflect the sound from that. The lights were added because of the tournament. So, one of the things we heard from all the tournament providers and the players is if there's no lights at the facilities, when sunset happens, they could be in the middle of a match, and then they have to stop. And so, the lights were added in order to be able to compete seriously with other tournament facilities that do not have lights. They are designed with the Musco lighting system, so that they do have cutoffs, just like probably the ones that you're referencing at the Fields. Same type of structure there. So, we have taken into account sound and lighting and the impacts on the neighbors, and we were always anticipating having tournaments. I will tell you, somebody mentioned it when they were speaking, the Pickleplex tournament. I mean, if you go to that several days, there is no recreational play, no league play. But the draw that it brings in from the local players and the regional, and even the national players. People go just to see these professional players that are best in the country, top in the country, you know, college students that are on full-ride scholarships. It does create almost a special event environment, where you're bringing in food trucks, you're bringing in additional facilities for restroom uses, you're bringing in, people are selling goods, you're mingling all day with the players. Center courts are set up with cameras, and, you know, they're streaming live, interviewing players. I think when we have our first in the community in the Cape, it will be interesting to see it happen here. So, to the comment of it will create kind of a sports tourism, absolutely.
Just kind of go, I just want to cover the committee. We no longer have a golf course committee at all. We've put most of our committees into a stakeholder, a Parks and Recreation Stakeholder Group. So, I think it'd be a great idea if we had one representative from pickleball, and one representative from tennis to join our stakeholder group and be a part of that. We meet monthly. Now, quarterly at this point, we're thinking about changing to monthly. So, I think that would be helpful for us if we had a member join. And if you're interested, just contact our office, and we can see if we can get you signed up, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. Being relatively last in the order, most everything's been addressed that I had written down. I do have a couple of other things left. And it had a little bit to do with the advisory group, if you would. Have, and you've mentioned that you're hopefully soon going to announce your chosen manager for this facility. Do the managers ever develop a members advisory group where as the operation, you know, is working and/or not in some ways, did they develop an advisory group amongst members? Since this is, it seems like a kind of a family, you know, environment as it's created, almost like a club-like environment? Is there ever, does a manager ever do anything like that?
I don't have any recollection or knowledge of anybody within our organization creating something like that, but I certainly see a benefit of doing something. And the flexibility we have as our organization, if that's something that's going to benefit, why wouldn't we try it? I will add that we are a network. The general managers of all of our venues meet on a monthly basis to share best practices and share some things that didn't go right. So, that one person will pay the tax to begin with, so the other people in the network don't have to. We have incredible amount of buying power with vendors because of this network that we have. We're only a phone call away from most people, and we use that to the benefit of the general manager, who essentially is responsible for the venue that they're in charge of.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And I was just interested at the rationale around dealing with the hours. I too understand why it ought to start earlier because of the heat that we deal with, and potentially go later because it's cooler in the evening, and also people getting off work and whatnot. I was a little confused with why a closing time of 5:00 on Sunday? Is that typical? And why would that be true? And, and why would that be true? Well, I would just naturally think that a lot of people work during the week, and the only time they have is on the weekends, and they want to make full use of whenever they could go on the weekend. Five o'clock close on Sunday?
Experience of the facilities that we have. Tournaments typically wrap up three, four o'clock on, on Sundays, so that people have travel time to get home. Sunday nights is typically the time that people are not looking to go out and participate in recreation. They're at home with their families in preparation for school the next day, and, and for work the next day. It was essentially a line in the sand based upon the experience that we have. Certainly in Naples, we find that, you know, do we, do we retain that time? This facility, the operating cost will be defined by how, how many hours that it's open. And also, it was a nod to the local neighbors as well of, you know, one night per week is not, not a lot to ask that, that the facility, the neighborhood is their neighborhood.
I see. Okay, thank you. And lastly, you had mentioned early on that when you were developing the, you know, that your, your first blush at the fee structure, that you had a model that, that you work with and whatnot, and so, and I, you know, fellow council members have thrown out some other numbers, $200, this, you know, $5 drop in. Is there a way to work that model that, hey, if we plug those numbers in and, all right, then we need to get this much money from tournaments or from, you know, placard advertising on the, on the fences or however, whatever? Is that something that, that you can work for comparative evaluation that says, hey, here's how the model works based on what we brought to you, and if, if you wanted it more like what you talked about, then this is how it would have to be?
Yeah, 100%. I refer back to the direction we received earlier is that this venue is, the focus is on local programming use, and we, we, we work the model based upon the majority of the use being local programming use. We can absolutely put those numbers in. What that means is there will be more of a emphasis on tournament play, and the devil's advocate side of this means that that is actually going to take away potential local programming hour use. And as long as everyone's comfortable with it, we're comfortable with it, too.
Okay. And I didn't, I didn't hear, it's, it's kind of more of the, of the, you know, citizen play and tournaments. Didn't hear a whole lot about leagues in, in our area. Wouldn't league play also assist in that as well?
Yeah, absolutely. So league play, the different types of leagues, different categories, different brackets, that's all in the plan, and those leagues typically happen weeknights in the evenings. We will lean on the actual individuals who will be running the, the facility in-house to identify that, but the, the plan is to, I, I set aside courts for clinics, set aside courts for league play, and set aside courts for special events as well. So that's in the plan. Ultimately, the model that was created was the membership fee being the most value, and to give you kind of an idea of how the sausage is made, it's, the membership fee is like season tickets if you're selling tickets to a sports franchise. Season tickets, fill out the stadium, you know exactly where you're, where you're at based upon the target that you have hit, and then you have to make up the rest with all of the other items. If that portion becomes smaller, either because we have less members or the rates are less, or the rates are what we're deciding on, we just have to make it up in those different areas. It's not a problem. We can go after that, but we'll, we'll advise all along the way of, of our experiences in other venues and what we think the market is.
Okay. And my last, thank you. And my last question, I, I said earlier, I have no experience with pickleball, but I've got significant experience with tennis. I didn't hear any mention of things like ball machine rental, a pro on-location for instruction, instructional time and whatnot, and so I don't know how that works in the pickleball world, I know how it works on the, on the tennis, in the tennis world. And so is there thought of entertaining a local pro, you know, kind of one of the things that I'm used to in tennis? And then who can and can't instruct there? And so based on, you know, where the revenue goes from that, from that professional instruction, whether that be, you know, someone being allowed to come in and they take the revenue with them from their instruction, or the instruction is only arranged through the facility and that instructional compensation remains within the, the facility's budget?
Yeah, that, that's a great point. The purpose of this presentation and was to identify that, that chunk of revenue that we talked about, that season ticket type of revenue. For brevity purposes, we didn't put in all of those individual kind of rental items like ball, ball machines that we're procuring. In terms of the, the clinic and the tuition aspect, there's a variety of ways that can be, that can go. The venue can take on the cost of hiring professionals, but that again becomes a hard cost for the facility. The other option is to hire 1099, on a 1099 basis, and then a revenue share with, with the pros. The idea that we have is that we would have a sports manager who would be responsible for securing those pros who would be operating the clinics that would be there. But that's, that's the model that we've, that we found success in, in, in our network and also through some of the other private organizations and venues that we've seen as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for me.
Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. Just please refresh my memory. I think you said that there would be free drop-in hours, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So that was included in your presentation, and I think that's a great idea. I was really happy to see that. I also like the idea of increasing the hours of operation, as long as sound isn't an issue, but it sounds like that has been taken care of. But overall, I know we're just in the beginning stages. I would like to see a solution that is the lowest cost to the resident, but also ensures cost recovery, and I think to do that, we're going to have to look at, oh, and does not include a subsidy, that's important to me. So we're going to have to look at the advertising and the tournament funding, basically. I think that's the only way to bring the cost down. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, admittedly, I, you know, I've got zero understanding of operating costs of these sorts of facilities. So with that, with that, bearing that in mind, you hear numbers of around 200, 250. I think that that's fair, again, with that understanding that I don't know those operating costs, but I do see surrounding complexes like the Pickleplex that, that at least from a fundamental perspective, from a footprint, seem, appear to be reasonably close to what we've got here. You know, we throw around premium and this and that, but I don't know that we're that much more premium than Pickleplex to be, to be proposing a 300% increase over what they, they charge their operating costs as our baseline. But again, I, I, this is going to be market-driven. For me, we're just trying to establish an original baseline. If, if that means to me setting it a little bit too low and being able to look at the end of this next year at, at a deficit and, and point to the residents and say, we tried, but ultimately we want to be net positive or at least cover operational costs, and then we have the information after a year of saying, we tried to keep it low and can't, can't keep up with operating costs at the very least, I, I'm okay with that, to the benefit of the residents. The, what I didn't hear with, with the numbers that were thrown out was whether those numbers were for the residents or whether they were for non-residents. I think we're all in agreement up here that there's going to be a desire from the residents to have a discount, whatever baseline we set for the pricing. So it's important for me, if, if that was their, their baseline for the residents, are we going up from that? Or if that was their baseline for non-residents, keep in mind that we're going to have to provide some sort of discount for the residents. I think that's, that's not even a discussion. So I would be interested in maybe hearing, hearing from that. I don't know whether it needs to be now. The, the family thing, I agree. I think families need to, need to have some sort of inclusion in there. Councilmember Carr's point, I, you know, if you've got six kids, I think it should be free because I, I know you're hurting already. But, you know, the, the other stuff that we covered, the advisory group or the committee, to me, I don't know that, that, you know, the committee to me or the professionals that we pay almost a quarter million dollars a year to run the facility, I, I don't know, you know, other than typical general input from the members and, and the public, that, you're always receptive to, that we need to, to go out of our way to establish something like that. And the time, yeah, I agree. I think that, that this was designed with the residents in mind. It wasn't an afterthought, and so I believe in, in our designers and our builders and their ability to work around any, any intrusions to the public, which would be minimal for the residents to the north with things like the city manager said for the berm. So if we want to increase the times, and if there is an issue, then we'll be receptive to changing that, but I, I wouldn't be opposed to, to starting those a little bit earlier and maybe a little bit later as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll weigh in. You know, there's, you know, this discussion I know is just a starting point, but I'll mention a few of the concerns that I had, and then walking into the meeting today of what I thought walking in and where I'm at now. First off, when I looked at the other memberships throughout the region, I thought we were high on the higher scale. I was more comfortable with the seasonal rates, the six-month seasonal rates. The, I do believe that we should have two different rates, one for residents, one for non-residents. I think that's very important. In our discussions today, the two, I believe I heard 200, 400, or 200, 300, I can't remember exactly what it was. I think Councilmember Hayden said 200, 400. Well, she kind of agreed with that. Councilmember Carr was 0 to 200. I'm okay with the two to four, you know, for a resident expense, and maybe we do the six-month seasonal where, that's kind of where I walked into the meeting, where I was at, 3 to 500 for, for non-residents. And that kind of keeps us, you know, where the discussion has kind of led us in here today. I think free open play, maybe in non-peak times, is important. I think our goal here is twofold. Our goal is memberships and tournaments. So if we have to give a little up during the day when the courts probably aren't being utilized, just to get the people through the door, it's like any other business model, half the problem just getting them through the door. Once we get them through the door, we can sell them on a product. So I think that's extremely, extremely important. You know, we've, we've gotten, I think it's important to have an individual and maybe a couple and a family rate, three different rates. I think we're going to have to identify how we recognize that, that's important. Of course, an individual would be easy. Couple, what's, what's the definition of couple? I think we have to identify that. Family, we have to identify what the definition of family is as well. You know, to the residents that said, hey, this should all be free. You know, while I was sitting up here, some of the things that I was looking at, hearing the discussion, I can tell you that we have two other facilities here in our community. You have Sunsplash, which is a water park, which is owned by the city, and we have Coral Oaks Golf Course. If you leave here today, you go to Sunsplash and you want to walk in today and you, and you don't join as a member or a seasonal pass, it's $42.99 is what was on the webpage. If you go over to Coral Oaks, if you have an annual pass, it's $1,650 a year. If you have an annual pass, you only have to rent the carts at $15, or you walk through the door not having an annual pass and the fee is $79. Here's two facilities that are owned by the city that are professional facilities, that a residence can go and utilize that particular facility, but they have to pay to walk through the door. So I see this facility no different than those other two facilities. It's a, you know, A-rated facilities. I will tell council that I had the opportunity, I don't know, it was about 18 months to 24 months ago, I came down to your facility, spent about a half a day, and we went through the Naples facility. It's a top-notch facility, extremely impressive. So, you know, I look forward to having that type of facility here in our city as well. I think that, you know, the average resident, you know, we have additional tennis courts, we have additional pickleball courts that are free throughout our community and our neighborhood parks. You can just show up and utilize them if they're not being utilized. This is a different facility to me than those types of facilities. It's just like if you play, say you play balls, baseball or softball. Okay, you can go to our, our local facility, you know, maybe at a Pelican Field or a baseball field, or you can go to JetBlue, and you're going to have to pay to go to JetBlue to play on a Class A recreational facility like that. The average person just can't walk through the door at JetBlue and utilize their facility. And I kind of put that in the context here, too. This is, this is a different type of facility. So I think there should be a fee that, that you have to be a member or you have to pay. So in summary, I think I can live with the $200 and $400 rate for, for our residents. I, I think we need to break it down one more step and maybe have the individual, couple or family rates and incorporate that within that $200 to $400 range. I also believe that one important thing, you know, we're, we are all here trying to make a decision, but what we haven't seen is what the goal is, what's your modeling? You know, you, you started out at a number in your modeling, and you said, okay, how can we get to that number? And you, in the process, developed this model, so much is going to be open play, some of it's going to be membership, some of it's going to be tournament play. So I think it would be helpful for council, at some point, not today, to see that modeling, to see what our goal is, how much monies are we trying to generate throughout the year at the end of that year? Now, of course, I think all of our goal is tournaments, membership, would pay for all of that, or tournaments and selling advertising rights and things like that. That would pay for the facility and the residents could use it for free, but that's not going to be in the beginning. That may be later, later on. So I think that each year, once we establish what the rates are going to be, every year we have to take a look at that and analyze, hey, where are we at? Can we modify that? Can we reduce it? Are we hitting our benchmarks? If we're not, then we'll, we can either reduce or, or have to come up with a different plan. So I think that's extremely important moving forward. And lastly, the hours of operation. I agree. I think you should be able to start at 7:00 AM, and the maximum amount of time would be 9:00 PM. If you look at most of our sports facilities or athletic fields in the evening, I know when my son was in soccer, I was out there until nine o'clock at night, two or three nights a week. So we have a variety of sports complexes that have their lights on, they're, they're operating until nine o'clock, so I think we have to be a good neighbor, and we have to make sure that we try to make sure the lighting's proper, the sound, we have the buffering necessary, so we have to be a good neighbor. I think it's important, 7:00 AM, you know, a contractor can show up at a construction site and start working a jackhammer at 7:00 AM, why can't you hit a pickleball at 7:00 AM in the morning? So I don't, I don't really see the detriment there. So I think 7:00 AM to about 9:00 PM, I'll go with your recommendation, that's why you're here, you're the professional. You know, if, if you don't see a lot of play at, because I kind of agree with Councilmember Stanky, it, it would seem that on the weekends, a lot of us, that's the only time we have to do either family time or recreational time. So to close at 5:30, but I'll, I'll lean on your advice there if, if that's, if that's what you, if that's what you recommend. But that's kind of where I'm at. In summary, I think that we'll probably have some additional discussion. Staff will probably bring, bring a plan back for us. I'd like to see the modeling. I'd like to see what our goal is, where, where that dollar amount we're trying to hit, because we may see that and say, okay, the O and M cost at this facility is X, and we need to see, well, how many memberships, what's the goal? How many memberships are we trying to sell? How are we going to get there? So there's still a lot of unknown here, and I think this, we'll have to start with a baseline and then reevaluate it any year to see, see how we're doing, but that's where I'm at. Councilmember Stanky?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. As you, as you spoke, it reminded me, as you were talking about needing definitions, you know, a couple of things I think need to be looked at. When we say a resident, does that mean a property owner or someone that is, that is a full-time resident? You know, they, and they claim this is their domicile, because we do have a lot of people that still maintain their residency, if you will, up north, and they come down here for five north, and they come down here for five months. But they pay taxes, they own the home here and whatnot, so I think, I think that definition needs to be there. And I don't think we should only have an annual rate, I think we should have a monthly rate as well. And I think those are the graduations, you either have a drop-in, a membership, either monthly or a membership semi-annually or annually. And a reason for that is we also have some things that our tourism attracts people to the area, spring training, we have people come down here, they're down here for two months, and so maybe a six-month membership doesn't work for them, but a two-month membership would, and they would just have to pay the monthly rate. And so, you know, obviously, to, a person would make a determination, well, I'll just pay a drop-in rate because I'm only going to do it twice a month, but no, I'm going to do it 10 times a month, so maybe paying the monthly rate's better. And then some, well, no, I'll pay for six months, and somebody else I pay an annual rate. So I think, just based on how people come and go in our area that actually own property here, we got, we got to accommodate that, I think.
Yeah, I agree. I actually had that in my note, and I forgot to mention that because resident can be, can mean many different things. Like you said, we know some people only come here a portion of the year, but like you said, they own a home, they pay taxes, they should have the same benefit than a renter who just happens to be a resident here and has it on their driver's license.
Yep.
We'll have to identify that, I think.
Can I add just a little bit as well?
Yeah, I didn't go through all the other fees because I thought they could be adjusted proportionally anyway. If you got a monthly fee of $19 for a resident, $38 for a non-resident based on the other fees, so that was the only reason I didn't talk about those. And if you want to turn couple into family and parentheses put two or more, you know, you can, you can do that, do that as well and get rid of the word couple. Thanks.
So can I add to this a little bit on the resident and the definitions we're talking about, because this is going to have implications across the department? So when we're defining right now, we don't have a resident, non-resident rate, and this could, so when we're setting these definitions, that we have to be consistent about what we do throughout the department. And we don't have that at this point. We clearly, we just have the resident or the cost of it. There's other ways to do this, you can charge a rate, whatever it is, and give a resident discount, so you don't get into the resident, non-resident thing. So hey, if you're a resident, whatever that means, if you're here for seven months, whatever it might be, you get a discount. The other part of this is understanding, you know, those definitions do, they mean a lot to a lot of people. So when you're talking about couple, when you're talking about individual, families, you know, generally a family is a family of four, and then you add two, you know, you add as you go. So we just need to be mindful of when we're making these definitions, this could have implications across the department, because at this point, we have not set those for all of our other facilities.
Yeah, that's, for me, if that's what we need to do, because I, for this facility, and if you want to apply it across the board, I understand that, but I do believe that definitely there should be a resident fee and a non-resident fee. How you get there, whether you say, okay, here's the fee and you get, get a discount, you're still back to X where you were trying to get to. So however you want to skin it, for me, it doesn't really matter. But I do think there should be a reduced rate for the, for the resident, since they're the one paying it towards their, you know, parts go bond referendum, and they're paying it in their property taxes each and every year. First, I want to thank you for coming today and your presentation, and it sounds like we'll probably have some additional discussion moving forward. Mr. City Manager, have you gotten the direction that you're looking today, anything else that you're looking from us?
No, I think we have, I have a good enough consensus on hours, kind of where we need to be in the price range. I will get with Joe and the sports facilities companies, we'll see if we can put together a package. I'll bring it back to you all. We can discuss individually if it kind of fits where, where you're all expecting, and then if, if everything looks good, we can move it forward for adoption.
And what is staff's goal with getting this facility open?
We're looking at late June, early July, so we just have to shore up the time schedule with, obviously, we have hiatus coming through, so if we have to delay a little, we can do, there are strategies we do to give people open play. If we open, we haven't set our fee structure, we can possibly have the opportunity to give people experience to use the facility if we open, and we don't have the full fee structure. So there's things we can do until we get our set fees on, but we're looking, late June, early July is when we're supposed to get it handed over.
Councilmember Long?
Just a question for clarification. I know City Manager said he had direction, but is it a direction to actually set the fees or a direction to kind of move forward with another proposal for us? Because I know there's been a couple of different fee structures that have been thrown around up here.
What, what I've heard is we're, we're not going with this proposal, so we are going to be looking at more in the range of the 200 annual, 400 for the family, and figure out how we, we work that together. We will, I will come back to you all with what we propose, or what we, we think is in the range of what, what I've written down here from all of your, you know, input. If it's too low and you think that it should be a little higher, we'll do that. If you think it's too high and needs to be a little lower, we'll, we'll, we'll make the adjustments. The idea here is to get the fee set before the facility opens.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I misunderstood when I heard the two to 400, I thought that was a range, I didn't realize it was the, the family versus the...
Well, if you heard it that way, I mean, perhaps we could, perhaps we'll get, if you want to get clarification that the two to 400 is not the individual to...
Very quickly, if I could. I mean, I, I said 255, I agree, when I, when I use Pickleplex for a reference, that's 255. Our facility hands down is a better facility, so that was a baseline for me. If there was, others were consensus at 200, that's fine.
Pickleplex facility in Pontagordo is 225, and I can tell you, I've been there, probably many of these players have. It is nothing like what we have. Our facility is 10 times better than that facility. And I'm not saying that to, to put down that facility, but our facility is light years beyond that one, from amenities provided, level of, you know.
Okay, so your understanding is to set it at 200, is that what I'm hearing? Or did we get another crack?
Based on what I have written down here, a majority was discussed, 200 for annual, 400. I wrote that down for family. If you're thinking that you're, it's the range between two and 400, then, then yeah, I'd like to get that clarified before we walk away.
Well, I'm, I'm likely in the, in the wrong on that understanding, but if, I guess you were the original one that set the two...
My understanding was 200 individual and 400. I would be...
Okay. And that's everybody's understanding?
And from that, we'll build a monthly and a drop-in.
Yeah, it's my understanding.
The, the drop-in rates, where we've, where we started, the idea if you, in the, in the discussion was taking the annual rate, and if you assume four times a month, that was less than $10. If you look at Pickleplex, which is our nearest competitor, it's $10 for drop-in. So we were trying to be competitive with a facility that we're going to compete with for tournaments and parks.
No, I get it, but we're only talking about two numbers right now, but there's some other numbers that we're, and I see a drop-in rate and a monthly rate, not just an annual rate.
Tournament rates.
But the, but the two, 400 are kind of like the baseline that then, all right, well, it's going to be...
We'll flow through the other rates, that's, yeah.
There's got to be a little less than divide by 12.
Right.
Right. I mean, a little more than divide by 12. And so, but we'll use that as our baseline to set the other rates. I'm okay with that.
I think, if I, if I may...
Go ahead.
We're like a real-time AI thing, but we're human, right? We're here, we're here, we listen, we learn. Let's bring you back some models to say, if it's this, this is what you have to, this is what you can expect. If it's this, this is what you can expect. So you can make the decision based upon, on what we present to you. We've heard from the people that have been here today, we've heard from everything that's come through, e-comment as well. Certainly, we'll, we'll put together some, some updated models for you guys to, to, to review and, you know, choose your own adventure, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to, let's see where our benchmark is, where are we trying to get to first, and then the rest of this will play out. I think that's extremely important.
Yeah, this, this was all designed to stimulate conversation, stimulate this kind of, so we get to where we're going to be. And is it going to be right, first off? I think you mentioned, we would, we'd want to review it at all times to make sure that whatever the, the market rates are, whatever, how the, the facility's performing, we'll listen to the market and we can adjust either way as, as time, as time dictates.
So I guess the, the direction you're looking for, Mr. City Manager, is, and the question that Councilmember Long had asked was, is everybody okay, or at least a majority of us, with the two to 400 range as far as individual, family? And we'll kind of build our, build our model off of that. We'll start with Councilmember Kyle Stenner.
I'm okay with cost recovery, and if it's as low as possible. I don't have a specific number.
So we're on the right track?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Okay.
Thank you.
Got the direction you're looking for?
Yeah, like I said, just three states, we're going to go back, we're going to build some models off of that. I'll meet with you. If they're too low, you can let me know. If they're too high, you can let me know based on where you want to be.
Okay. Sounds great. It's 1:10 now, why don't we take a 15-minute break, come back at 1:25. Excuse me. Excuse you. Yep. What, the safer? All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We'll move on to the next item of discussion, which is Item 7A2, the Yacht Club Pier Reconstruction. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna turn this presentation over to Dave Heide, our CIP, interim CIP Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Dave Heide, interim City CIP Director. So this morning, or this afternoon, we're gonna talk about the Yacht Club Fishing Pier Reconstruction. I know you've all had received copies of a couple of different pile investigation reports that Kim Lee Horn has worked on. They initially went out and did a visual inspection and an underwater inspection of all the pilings, and came back with a report about the condition of the piles. From that report, we decided to move forward and do a more in-depth investigation to explore what the condition of the pilings were underneath some jackets that had been applied several, many years ago as a repair to the pilings. So, once they completed removing the jackets and looking at the conditions of the piles of probably, I think there was 12 or 14 different piles they looked at, they came back with a couple of recommendations on how we could proceed with reconstructing the pier. So, one of the options would be to just go back and take the existing piles that have been damaged and the ones that they deconstructed a little bit to do the investigation, and put new jackets on those 24 piles, and then rebuild the pier from there. The other option would be to put new jackets on all of the pilings. And the difference, other than cost, is that if, if we only repair the few piles, 24 piles, then the rest of the piles have, you know, some level of deterioration, so there'd be a shorter lifecycle cost in the pier if we don't replace, don't repair all the piles. If we do repair all the piles, then that extends the lifecycle reconstruction. Just to give you an idea of what the restoration involves, you can, the existing piles are between 12 and 14 inches. And part of that is because the existing jackets have a grout layer between the protective jacket that was applied years ago and the original piles. So, the plan would be to add reinforcing steel and a new jacket that would basically encase the existing pile, the new reinforcing, and then that would be filled with grout. The recommendation that Kim Lee Horn provided was to also, the jacketting has a zinc metal layer to it to provide some protection from corrosion from the saltwater. If, I don't know if you're familiar with boating, they have these little zinc tablets that you put on your motors to help attract the corrosion away from eating into the motor. That's basically what this would do, is provide an extra level of protection as time goes So, I, then, depending on how we decide to go, there's a couple of options for redoing the pier. The first option is we either restore some of the piles or all the piles and then rebuild the pier. Under that option, you know, we wouldn't change the location or structure or height to the pier, we'd just basically fix the piles and then put a new deck on it. In that case, we'd have to go get a Army Corps of Engineers permit, a nationwide 404 permit for the maintenance operation, which would probably be a six-to-nine-month process. And, and the reason we need to do that is because applying these jackets is gonna disturb the, the base, you know, the subsurface or the surface of the river. The second option would be to remove the piles and, and put in all new piles. Because that would be considered new construction, we'd have to get a full Army Corps of Engineers permit, which would take longer. It would be the 12 to 18 month, or, as we've experienced, it could be longer. But tho, those are really the two options. And, I guess to, to help quantify that for you, the cost table I provided, the first option for repairing only the damaged piles, the second option is with repairing all the piles, and the third option would be to remove all the piles and, and put in new piling. Other than the cost, the, the difference basically is the time it would take to permit it. So, the first option is, is the cheapest option, but it, it doesn't give us quite as long of a lifecycle for the pier, and we're gonna end up having to go back in and monitor those piles that didn't get repaired, and probably end up doing maintenance and repair work on those at some point in the future. The second option, replacing all the, or restoring all the piles, is, is probably the most expensive, but it still gets us there in the shorter permitting timeframe. The last option, removing the piles, is actually less expensive than repairing the piles, but it's gonna take a little longer to do the permitting. One of the advantages of the third option is that the current elevation of the structure is low. You know, if you look at the Fort Myers Pier or the Naples Pier, those are, you know, 10 or 12 feet off the water. Our pier was only a few feet off the water, and that's part of the reason it, it got damaged so badly in the storm. So, I, I think that in order to help with the hardening of the new structure, it would be a benefit to install new pilings and raise the structure. But, again, you know, it's, it's kind of up to, up to y'all, how, how you want to proceed with restoring the pier. And all of these options are looking at basically putting it back in the same configuration, whether it's on the existing piles or elevated on new piles. So, I guess I'm looking for some direction on how to direct our consultant in preparing a design for the reconstruction.
Before I open it up, just real quickly, just so I make sure I understand, looking at the three options before is here as far as the monetary difference. The first option, number one, will give us about a 15-year life expectancy for that particular option. Option two is a 25-year life expectancy, and if I recall, option three, was that a 30? I thought I read that somewhere.
It, it could be 30 or longer.
Okay, all right.
Because it's all brand-new, brand-new concrete pilings.
Thank you, and I'll open up for discussion. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for clarification on the years of the duration of life. The only question is, is the cost associated with remove and replace taking into consideration the new elevation height that you just described?
Yes.
Okay, great. And the other question, with the timelines, and I know we can't really have a definitive timeline on the permitting process, but even at the, even if it went 18 months plus 10, it's, I mean, if, if we were to have it done before the completion of the building, we wouldn't be able to open it anyway. Is that correct? In other words, the, the pier will be closed during construction of the new structures that we're putting down there, if I understand correctly?
Yeah, based on what we've been discussing so far, it would be, it'd be very difficult to keep the, the beach and the pier open when all of the beach, you know, the beach improvements and the pool and the clubhouse, you know, the, it would just be hard to keep that open.
So, be, you know, that's factoring into my decision as well. In other words, having it done expeditiously is, is the most, you know, what I would prefer, but lifespan, and also the fact that if it's done and we can't open it because of the construction still occurring with the, with the new facilities there, that it's, it doesn't make any sense. So, I'm leaning based on just that thought process onto the, the cost-effective one with removing and replacing all piles. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. Looking at the numbers, down here below, it says state appropriations has allocated $2 million towards it. That's, so that could really take the total cost from 5.4 down to 2.4 if we use that state money, or is that money already included, and it's really a 7.4?
No, no, this, the numbers are just the raw construction
Okay.
... cost. And that $2 million, that was an appropriation from the state for the seawall And that $2 million, that was an appropriation from the state for the seawall and the pier and the beach. So, it, it, it could be applied to either.
Okay.
It, it may be that it would, would be easier to apply that actual appropriation to the seawall restoration versus the pier, but either way, we're going to have to make up the difference in either of those projects.
Yeah, so I would, I would lean towards three, remove and replace. Since we are building a new yacht club facility that's going to last the next 50 years, I'd like to at least build the pier that's going to do the same. My question I had with the city manager, I don't know if he was able to find out, are some of the current piles close to the beach now, are we able to build a temporary pier while construction's going on?
I, I didn't have a chance to get to that answer before, before the meeting, but it was something that we're going to look into is can we do a, a smaller thing in, in the interim till we have to close the whole facility to, to redo it?
So, are we closing the boathouse as well when we close the whole facility? Are they going to be forced to close?
No, the, the boathouse, if you recall from all of our previous discussions over the last several years, it was single-phase, so not staged, and we had to work around the boathouse to, to keep them open. So, that's the, that's still the current plan.
Yeah, because that, that kind of leads towards if we can build a smaller temporary pier while we're doing construction, I think that would give the residents the feel that we're back on track and would make it a lot easier to do this 18, potentially 36 months before this new pier is done and permitted, and permitting with the new facility. So, I would like to look into that if we could do something temporarily small to give that site that we are getting stuff done. But then my vote on this would be to remove and replace all for the future. Thank you.
I, I think we can, we can do that because their recommendation and, and their investigation of the pilings are that the pilings are serviceable. It's just a matter of how long they're going to last. So, I, I think there shouldn't be any problem putting a new structure on part of it. And if we're not going to go to the expense of restoring the piles, if we're just going to put a new deck on it, we don't need to do any additional permitting. So, it would, we can do that quickly.
Yeah, that's why I think that would at least give something to the residents saying, hey, we can, we can enjoy our sunsets without having to sit at the boathouse and pay, you know, $12 for a drink to watch the sunset. They can go on a smaller pier and enjoy it there while we're doing construction. Thank you.
That's certainly an option.
Councilmember Steineke.
Thank you. Although to follow up on that, obviously that'd be dependent on whether or not those initial pilings were damaged to the point that they needed sleeving, because the, the need of the sleeve is what requires the permit, the Army Corps permit, correct?
All the in-water work, correct, yep.
Yeah, so, so if, if it's the initial, if it's the shore-based pilings, that would require that we'd have to get the permit anyway to do that work, even just to do a short pier, to, to have the pilings, you know, structurally sound to put that deck on top.
I, I think the intent of what Councilmember Welsh is discussing is utilizing the pilings that are there for an interim temporary pier, so not even looking to get the 15 years out of it. Use the structurally sound ones there without trying to buy the additional life for the 4 million. So, is there a way to put 100-foot or 200-foot versus, you know, 2,000 feet?
I got it. Okay.
And the, the piles that received the most damage and the ones that were damaged during the investigation are further out.
Okay, alright, cool. There was one thing that was confusing to me. I know that through our talks of what will be done and, and is being considered with the yacht club restoration, a piece of that was to, to do some additional work around the pier with a floating dock and, and whatnot. And there's, there's reference in, on slide number five. It says, "A general permit triggering multi-agent review will be required, limiting the size and location of the new structure to existing pier footprint and existing submerged land lease area may shorten the permitting process." So, then on the following slide where we're talking about the permitting process, I, I don't think we have any pricing there on any additional pier work, if you will, the floating dock next to the pier or whatever. And so, when you say could shorten the permitting time, is that 12 to 18 months the shortened time?
No, that, that's, that's a typical timeframe to get a Corps of Engineers permit. And for this structure, since it's out in the river, we do have a submerged land lease for the location of the pier, and they, they draw those leases pretty tight around the boundary of the actual structure. So, if we go with the option of replacing the piles, theoretically, we could change the shape and location of the pier a little bit, then we'd have to get a new submerged land lease. So, that, that may take a little extra time in the process. So, keeping the pier in the same shape that it is now would eliminate that complication in the permitting process.
And so, does the 12 to 18 months assume we keep it in the same?
Yes.
Okay, and obviously the 5.4 million is keeping it the same?
Correct. Yeah, if we decide to do something different, then that would change the cost.
Yeah, for me, with, with that in mind, the relatively shorter amount of time that it takes and save 1.1 million and have a pier that will last twice as long, I think three's a no-brainer for me.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yeah, I'm leaning towards option three. The other question I have would be, I'm not against the height change, but what I would like to know is how much height are we talking about increasing? And would it change the aesthetics? You know, like right now, I know if you stand, you know, on the sidewalk, you know, along the, the road that we have there now at the edge of the beach, and I look out, I, I, I know what my view is. If we're jacking these up, I don't, I don't know how many feet we're talking about. Is it, is it going to really change the, the overall appearance? Is it, is it going to downgrade the, the, the view in any way? I could be wrong. I have, I have no idea. It's just a, it's just a question. Just to, you know, has anybody thought about that? Because I do understand the reasoning for saying, hey, let's make it higher for a storm that might come or never come. So, I, I know the importance of that to protect it in the future, but I was just curious about appearance.
Well, the, the pier is not a habitable structure, so it, it doesn't necessarily need to be, you know, if you're going to replace it, it doesn't have to be replaced like a house where it has to be at the finished floor elevation of the FEMA flood elevation maps. But the flood elevation zone at the pier is 11, and the current structure is just under 5. So, it would be a six-foot difference if we wanted to get it up above the FEMA flood elevation. And it would look different, whether it would be, you know, it's going to be on piles, so you can sort of see through it, but not, not, you know, not really, you know, because of the piles, the staggering, it'll, it'll, it may block the view a little bit.
So, are you saying it's not really a choice? It's, it's, we have to bring it up to standard?
No, that's why I say it's not, it's not like a habitable structure. So, you don't have to, you know, meet the minimum flood elevation.
Gotcha.
It, it would certainly help with the FEMA funding, which we're still working through, if we, you know, it's considered hardening, you know, and, and protection of the assets if we did raise it up.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Alright, so you know, the lights one, I think for me, option three is, is the most economically prudent choice for me. It's a little additional permitting time, but we're going to get at least a minimum of 30 years compared to, to the other two options that we have. I'm a little apprehensive in that permitting schedule that's listed there in the presentation. We applied for Army Corps permits back in 2021 at the yacht club, and here we are still waiting on them. So, I think that's, that 12 to 18 months is pretty, you know.
Aggressive.
Yeah.
Well, I, I qualified that saying, but it may, but that's the standard timeframe, assuming things all fall into place.
You know, when you look at it economically, I think number three is, is the best choice, and that's where I would recommend. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I'm, option three as well. I, I guess my only concern as you look at the various piers, our pier, Fort Myers Beach pier, I think the Naples piers, all their pilings stayed, but the decking rails, whatever they had, all, all washed away. Will the extra elevation help protect those piers? We, I, I don't think it's that we'll never experience an Ian again. I think it's when we experience another Ian again, how these piers will hold up beyond the pilings and the decking and the elevation and all that. Is that a factor in the decision?
Well, certainly if we, if we raise it, it's going to protect it from the wave action and, and surge, which, you know, theoretically would allow it to remain without getting washed out. So, you know, it really depends on the elevation of the surge and the waves. But leaving it only four feet above the water certainly provides a better chance that it's going to get washed out.
Yeah, and on the temporary pier thing, since it sounds like this pier may go right back in the same place. So, the temporary pier would stay open until construction, once we got the permits? Construction started on the new pier?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we can probably stage the new construction to, to start out in the water and work its way back. And at some point, we'd have to, you know, tear out the temporary pier to put the new one back.
Okay, who hasn't weighed in? Councilmember Cosden, have you weighed in?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of option three.
I believe that's everybody.
I didn't say anything, but three for me. Yes, sir.
Wow. It's unanimous.
Yeah, that don't happen too often.
No clarification, no clarification needed.
Thank you. Alrighty, let's move on. Item 3A, beautification, financial allocation. Actually, I was the one that added this discussion back on April the 9th. I had asked staff for a summary of the monies that was in FY '24 budget for median beautification. Mr. Mason was kind enough to provide a response to myself and all of council. And I, I know, was speaking with the city manager, there was some dollars that were there that has not been identified exactly what we're going to utilize the money for. And the monies was just sitting there. So, I thought, since staff didn't have the direction that they needed to, to, to utilize the funding, and we're halfway through the fiscal year, I thought it was prudent to at least have a discussion where we could collectively as, as a council, give the direction to count, to staff on, on how that money may be distributed. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in line with what you said, the council did set aside money last year during the budget session with the intent of utilizing it to add something to the community. At the time, going back, if you recall, there was a request to use it for median landscaping. One, another council member was looking to use it for sidewalks, and the council had some discussion about, you know, beautification could be anything, from public art to painting to medians to sidewalks. And so, that money was budgeted in a kind of a capital project fund titled beautification. And we're just looking for some sense of direction on, on what the council would like us to do with that so we can, you know, put that money to work.
And the, the allocated amount of money? 1.7?
Mark, was it 1.7? Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, it says city beautification in the email that Mr. Mason provided. And I think on that particular line item, city beautification, it was $1.7 million. When I had inquired from the city manager, it was kind of unknown what we were going to utilize that money for, so that's why I brought it forward. So, I figured we could add that discussion here today. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, the reason that money was moved from sidewalks is because we were behind on our sidewalk projects. We didn't have the crews at the time to continue the work. So, there was some reason to believe that we could use this money for beauti- median beautification projects, but now it sounds like we're right back to where we were, that, you know, this money hasn't been allocated anywhere, we're behind on median projects. So, I guess, and you hadn't, you know, we had talked that possibly during this fiscal year, we could get more money back towards sidewalks, depending on where we were on our projects. So, I guess my first question is, if we were behind on sidewalk walk projects last year at this time, where are we right now? And can that money go to continue on with our sidewalk projects to get sidewalks done within one mile of schools and then move on to two miles of schools? So, I guess those are my main questions.
Damon, do you know where we're at with the sidewalk? We're, we're still behind, okay?
For, this year, we have gone out, we tried the design-build process to bring in sidewalk work so we could get ahead with our design-build. It was well over budget, and now we're in the process of going to a design-bid-build that's in the works with procurement. Our in-house staff were, I think, about 50%. We've had several members that have left or there's been some turnover. So, we continue to be behind with our sidewalks. We can provide a list of, you know, the progress we've made and how many projects we still have to do. I don't know that we have that with us today.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm assuming we have made some progress since last year. But if I could get an update on that and where we stand and, you know, when we might be able to get back up to full staff, if that's, you know, I know it's difficult. But what I had told the city manager on Monday is my concern, where, you know, wherever this money goes, my concern was I didn't want to go into next year's budget cycle and not look at having money for sidewalks. If we go two years without funding sidewalks, that's a, that's a real problem for me. I know the multimodal projects, you know, help and change things a little bit about in terms of what funding, state funding might be available to us, but I would appreciate that update, at lea- at least for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just to add some additional context, without having reviewed the minutes, I think one of the reasons, my input during the discussion that we had about the budget when we allocated this, and maybe some of the reason why we, we left it a little bit more broadly as beautification rather than specific to medians or one other use was, I'd had a desire, and I think there was maybe one other individual, to maybe throw some of that money towards landscaping in some of our parks. I don't know if you recalled that discussion or not. A lot of the parks that we put online, there's a lot of fees and upfront that goes into it. And unfortunately, that means that it comes at the expense of landscaping. And when we do put in that landscaping, in some cases, it is minimal. And if it is there, it's, the trees are younger, they're smaller, and it takes many years to mature. So, I would throw that in for a suggestion as well. We've got a couple of new parks coming online as well. Crystal Lake is coming up, which is mostly just a, a walking path with very minimal landscaping. There's a couple others. So, I, I would throw that out there into the universe as well for discussion, maybe throwing some of this money towards the landscaping in, in our parks that we're bringing online. Thank you.
Yeah, I think another option could be, I know that there's been some discussion, we have, what, about 12 miles of curb medians already throughout the city? And I know that's a big expense when we talk about median beautification. Not saying you have to spend all of that monies, but if we were going to allocate any of this money to median beautification, I would recommend trying to utilize at least a segment of that 12 miles that already has curb medians, where we could not have that big expense for the curbing. I know if you look at the, I think recently, we just got the breakdown of sands in Aqua Linda Boulevard, what the curbing was, that's a pretty substantial expense. what the curbing was, that's a pretty substantial expense. So, if we were gonna use it for median beautification, I would, I would recommend using it on those particular roadways. I think we'd get a bigger bang for our buck because we wouldn't have to put in the curbs. I'm also not, I'm not opposed to utilizing it, maybe at one of the, I'm not totally familiar, when I recall, Crystal Lake, I think that's, it's gonna be a pretty nice park up there. But with limited amount of landscaping. Also, you have Tropicana Park, I know that's coming up, that you may be able to put some of that monies towards one of those, those parks as well. And then, I think you could, you know, take a look at, and I think we've already, have we already addressed the medians down in the CRA area that were damaged? And then, we have a variety of other medians throughout the city that I know we had damaged trees as a result of Hurricane Ian. You may be able to use some of this money for those particular tree replacements. So, I think there's a variety of things that we could consider with this particular monies, whether we use it all for one particular item or another, or we divide it up somehow. So, with that, I'll let, as far as my comments, let Omar go ahead.
Good morning, or good afternoon, everyone. So, we currently have a bid that was, that's gonna go in front of the CR, or actually to the city manager as a CRA board CEO, for the reforestation of trees within the CRA area itself. That's due to loss of trees during Hurricane Ian. And we're probably gonna have some money there to work with to do additional plantings, probably around Lafayette. That's what I'm identifying right now. So, we have, what I'm trying to say is we have pretty good coverage within the CRA area itself. As far as the other medians that are what we call improved medians, that are under landscape contracts, those are being, we have refurbishment funds that we're using, utilizing to plant trees in those medians. We just had some funding approved to add refurbishment funds to additional contracts that didn't have it before. This happened back in February. So, those are being utilized right now to add additional tree canopy into those medians that were lost because of hurricanes, not just Ian, but even prior to that as well, because it's been steady, you know, loss throughout the years.
So, in summary, are you saying as far as damaged trees throughout the city as related to Hurricane Ian or previous hurricane, we have a funding mechanism identified for those replacements?
For the improved medians, the medians that are under current landscape medians contracts.
The improved?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So, that doesn't sound like it, that's an option enforced, because it sounds like a funding mechanism's been identified. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. I guess with all that's been said, I would, I would want to ensure that we're doing it about, as, as much as we can for the sidewalk expansion in the city. I know that's not necessarily beautification, but it certainly is, you know, something that enhances our citizens' ability to experience our community in a safe way. So, if those dollars were needed for that, to either get caught up or get us ahead of the curve there, that would be, that would probably be top of my list. Second would be, would be the medians. Assistance in the beautification of the medians, I think a greater number of our citizens each and every day get to experience that, and our visitors get to experience that. And then, my third in a row would be, would be additional landscaping for, for parks. Thanks.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. I'm gonna have to kind of agree with Councilmember Steinkie there, but instead of trees and medians, I'm gonna throw a kind of wrench in the system. What if we allocated it towards curbing, uncurved medians? Because at that point, that's getting, to the point that the mayor made, that we're spending the money for these median beautification programs, a lot of the money, the cost is for the city is to curb them. So, if we were to look at uncurved medians and put some of this money towards that, it could enhance the adopted median program by offering more, we'll say, pre-ready medians to, to then be adopted. And would cost the city less if we put this money towards there. But definitely, I would say sidewalks are the most important. Curbing, more so than just trees and medians. But then, also adding additional trees to parks would be great. But that would be my third. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes, I think sidewalks are important, but we have a backlog. I do agree that, I believe the biggest obstacle for median beautification is curbing. So, I would be for spending all the money on curbing medians that we know need to be curbed. That could possibly be future locations for beautification. One could be the main corridor of our city, which is Cape Coral Parkway. We have a big stretch of Cape Coral Parkway that needs curbing. So, that's my input. Thank you.
Alright, well, I think what we'll do is maybe go down the list and maybe list priority one and two. Or we can do three, it doesn't really matter. And then, we'll see where it kinda shakes at it then. And hopefully, that'll give staff some type of direction. My only question with the curbing, and I only say this because this was in the email that Mr. Mason sent me, I don't, one thing I wanna make sure we do is I don't wanna put money somewhere where we can't spend it or utilize it. You know, it's like with the sidewalks, it still sounds like we're behind. So, if we put money there and we're behind already, we're just, we're still gonna be behind. And the reason I mention this, in the email on the ninth, median curbing. Currently, we are low on staff to be able to operate the curbing and gutter machine. However, we are in the process of procuring a full staff. Some of this crew will be used for sidewalk installation, but we look to, again, to install curbs and gutters with our machine. We intend to curb the remainder of cultural park median with this funding. So, my question to staff is, Mr. City Manager, if we put this towards curbing, do we have the staff or the means, or will we put it out for a bid? I don't wanna put or vote to put money somewhere if we can't, if we don't have the manpower to do the work.
If we don't have the manpower to do the sidewalks, we don't have the manpower to do the curbing. It's the same crew. It's the concrete crew. Our goal was to outsource sidewalks so that we could focus on the, on the curbing, because we have the specialized machine. But if we haven't gotten to a position where we can award our sidewalks to the private sector, then essentially, we're competing for our own resources. It's like pulling the city manager or the city attorney in two different directions. So, a vote for the sidewalks is a vote against the curbing. A vote for the curbing is a vote against the sidewalks, unfortunately. Now, if you wanna do both, we can certainly outsource the curbing to the private sector. I mean, we did that on our median beautification, adopt the medians. It is more expensive. We did do the cost benefit analysis. But it can be done. So, I don't want, if there's some specification on the curbing to outsource it, then that'll be clear for me, because then I know it's not really a vote against the sidewalks. But absent that clarification, it's the same crew if the city's gonna do it.
Is your desire to get, get that crew in place? I mean, we spent, what, 300 and some thousand dollars for a Kirby machine now, it's just sitting somewhere.
Yeah, so what, what we have, you know, we've had these discussions before. At the lower end of the pay scale, at the 15 dollars, in the labor ranks and in the field tech, the entry one, we have seen, we have struggled trying to fill those positions. And it's not just in public works, it's been, you know, in other areas across the city. We've actually, the last round, one ahead and hired those employees, you know, at basically step four, three steps over the minimum, just to, just to give them, you know, 10% more. And it only brought us to 16, 15 an hour. We're competing against a private sector market and other entities that, you know, low, low-end jobs are, you know, 17, 18, 19 dollars an hour in air conditioning. So, it's, it's just the environment we're in, you know, our goal, as all, will always be to fill the positions. I never wanna be in a position where I'm asking you to add a crew because we're trying to provide service to the community, but we can't do it. So, our, our goal is to remain, you know, fully staffed. But, you know, when we encounter these issues, we do our best to work through them.
Alright. So, it sounds like sidewalks or curbing, that we could outsource it, basically, if we had that desire.
So, I will say sidewalks need a design. The curbing, you know, as you saw with our crew, we just went in and we did the curbing. It matches existing grade and they put the curb in. The sidewalk contractors are always gonna wanna design so they know what to do at, you know, utility boxes, driveways, you know, whether it's a concrete driveway or a paver driveway, what do they do with, you know, utility, you know, like I said, boxes, how to do aprons, you know, at intersections, a little more involved in, in sidewalks. And that's why, you know, we're, we're trying to get the, a design team and a, and a company that can work together to accomplish that.
Okay. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thanks. With that in mind and that design requirement, based on other things that I've seen and the cost of designs, does that kinda blow the 1.7? If we gotta go through design, are we, do we get more bang for our buck distance-wise, volume of impact-wise, if we can save that design cost?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that, if you can shave out a cost, you know, on a cost per linear foot, if you can remove something from that, you can, you would absolutely be able to, to stretch the money. Let me clarify a couple of things on the sidewalks. I know Councilmember Hayden, you know, brought us back to where we were last year. So, we, we did not cut every bit of sidewalks out of the budget last year. We do have 1.3 million dollars of grant-funded sidewalks. The money that we cut out was the supplemental money from the general fund, from, from the ad valorem taxes that were helping us accomplish getting sidewalks within two miles of schools quicker. So, we were, we were as a priority in the community from a transportation and safety perspective. We were not just waiting on grants to come in. We were actually dedicating general fund millage to, to expedite getting those projects completed. With the position we landed in last year, we were having a problem getting competitive bids that were worthy of issuance. So, we got, last year, we did get some responses to our requests, but I think if I remember correctly, it was like 8 million dollars for, for a couple of miles. I mean, it was, it was just ridiculous cost. And so, we decided, it wasn't in the best interest of, of the city to just award the contract and waste resources, because it wasn't efficient. So, we did not award that. And because we had money budgeted from the general fund already sitting there that we hadn't spent, that was the reason for the, for kinda the push year this year, why we didn't appropriate any in there. I do wanna point out, if you put this money into a capital project, just like we talked about earlier in the CRA, it, it, it doesn't have to be spent in the year that it, you know, is appropriated. Capital projects, you know, that funding does go beyond a single appropriation year. So, if the intent is to do that, when we, if you wanna do that and we award a sidewalk contract, then we can award both years worth of funding. It would be the same thing with medians. If we, if we didn't get a chance to spend the money, but we put it in a capital project, when we awarded it, we can award both. So, I don't want you to think that there's a, there's a rush, if we, if we identify a capital project, that we have to be able to spend it right away. I can understand that we've raised the taxes, and if we wanna provide an impact to the community right away, then we need to pick a project that fits kind of that characteristic.
Thank you. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, so that was, that was sort of the, the last point was one that I was looking to make, was basically, it sounds like if we do curbing, if we put it towards curbing, even the solutions that you provided, we wouldn't be, we could lock the contracts in, but we wouldn't be able to see the benefit of that until the backlog was cleared. And that's the case for sidewalks and for curbing. Is that, is that the case for the landscaping in the parks? Or would we be able to spend that right away?
No, I believe Omar has the ability to procure the, the trees and landscaping and work with them to get that implemented. Unless you, unless we go the other way, which was another option, which was putting it in like Crystal Lake, then it would be done as part of the project.
So, sorry, what was the question? I apologize.
It was mostly rhetorical.
Huh? Well, I, I, but it's, I, I.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was basically to prove the point that, that as far as value and being able to utilize the money, which is the point of this conversation, in a manner that we could see the results in the shortest period of time, effectively, in my, that was furthering my argument towards putting that in some of the parks that were coming online. So, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I guess this question would be for staff as well. There are other areas of the city that need beautification, as Councilman Long brought up, the parks. I have nothing against if, if we need some improvements at some of the parks that you know of that could be done. And, and there's not any manpower problems or anything like that where we can accomplish, I would be for that. I also thought of the charter schools, that's a city property. And I don't just wanna say the charter schools, but our other city-owned facilities. If there are any facilities that look kinda rough, that need to be spruced up, I would be for that as well. The charter schools, like I've noticed, a lot of shrubbery has, has died over the years and has never been replaced. It doesn't mean it happened from the hurricane. I mean, just over time, where things have died off. If, if there's possibilities of sprucing up our school or any of our city facilities, or as Councilman Long said, our parks, I would, I would be for that, if you don't see any obstacles there. And it doesn't interfere with any other funding or project that's already existing. Thanks.
Yeah, one thing also that I don't think has been brought up, and Mr. City Manager, I know we have a Operation Sparkle, you know, for our parks. I know we've allocated some monies towards that as well. I think here recently, I've even asked for a little bit of a breakdown on those particular projects. How are we doing with that? Is there other areas that still need to be addressed? Were you planning on putting that in next year's budget? Happened to go to the doctors yesterday. And, and the doctor that was seeing me, I recognized who I was. And at the end, he says, I just wanna let you know, my son's in soccer in Cape Coral, he was a Cape Coral resident. And he says, I just wanna let you know how much I've seen the difference in our parks in the last 18 to 24 months compared to how they've been over the years. And he said, I just wanted to bring that to, to your attention. So, we must be making a difference. Here's a stranger I never even met, that once he realized who I was, he just wanted to relay that message to me. So, my question is, you know, how are we doing? Is there other, were you gonna put additional monies in next year's budget? You know, what's the need?
Well, I can tell you without a doubt, Sparkle could use some funding. And the projects are already identified, the contracts aren't written to do the work. The, our funding that we have been progressing with has been about the pace of about three parks per year, which would be about a 10-year cycle for us to, to be able to go through all the parks and do the Sparkle work that needs to be done. Unfortunately, that's just the amount of, of revenue that is able to be set aside. So, you know, we're, we're funding a couple, a couple, two to three million a year, spending about a million a year in each park, and we have 30 parks to go through. Now, the assessments have been done and all the work has been identified. So, as, you know, it's just, if, if money were to go there, then we would just pick the next parks on the list, go to the assessment that was in there, and write the contracts to, you know, for the roofs, the windows, you know, ADA work, landscaping, whatever, whatever was on the list.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thanks. I'm still a little confused on the sidewalk versus curbing deal. Do I, do I understand you say that we do have the resources, we do have the city labor? city labor to do one or the other? Or we don't even have the resource to do one? We have the curbing machine. If if we said we want to dedicate this to go ahead and curbing where we don't have curbing today, do we have the capacity to do that?
Okay, the, just to clarify this, the the concrete crew that we have does sidewalks and they also operate our curbing machine. We had several folks that left and went into other divisions and some turnover in the concrete crew. We had also been trying to outsource these bigger buffer areas around the school, yet with the idea, outsource the sidewalks and then take our internal sidewalk crews and be able to do the grant projects that we had on the board, as well as utilize the curbing machine. The outsourced services that we went for came in much higher. And we are trying to pick up some of that slack with our internal crews. And the internal crews are roughly 50% of where they should be. We've been working with HR to talk about incentives and how do we keep people in the concrete crew. It's an ongoing conversation. But we are doing, keeping up with the grant-funded sidewalk projects. The other issue with the the curbing is that the few folks that we had to operate the curb machine are now going back, have have left, and we're doing training with our staff now to train up new staff that can operate the curbing machine. So, yet there there's another hurdle that we're we're working through. And so if we were going to look to do curbing or any path, any future curbing, it would need to be outsourced if you wanted to tap in right away.
Okay, and those bids that went out that came back at a much higher amount than you thought they were going to come back, was that for sidewalks or for curbing?
Sidewalks.
For sidewalks? Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, I don't see any other lights on, so Councilmember Cosden, why don't we start with you and just kind of maybe do a maybe the top two, maybe priority number one and then number two, and let's see where we shake out at the end.
I'm going to shock everyone. Sidewalks and the curbing is next.
On sidewalks and curbing?
On curbing and.
Can I get a clarification on the parks?
Yeah, me too.
So on the parks, a couple of, three options. Adding landscaping at existing, adding it to the new ones that are being built under the Go-Bon, or Sparkle? Can you just?
It doesn't matter.
Just to any park improvement that our staff needs.
Okay.
I'll let staff decide.
Works for me. I'll put it down, one for each.
And your first choice was what again?
Kirby.
Kirby. I guess my my two choices would probably probably be the parks. And I could go with either adding more landscaping in our new parks or or the Sparkle. And then my second choice would be the curbing.
Okay.
It would be parks for me, the new parks. That the two don't even seem feasible, so it's parks and parks.
Got it?
Sparkle and curbing.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the key. If 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 we're still trying to finish the projects through grant money for sidewalks, but if, and we just dedicated that crew to do that for the rest of the of the fiscal year, would we be done with those projects by October?
The sidewalks?
Yeah.
No.
They said no.
Okay.
It's it's the amount of, the distance and the amount of time we have.
I know that. So to Councilmember Long's point, the question really isn't feasible. The the money can't be used for that because we'll be talking about the same thing at this time.
That was my.
Next year is the money still wasn't used. So, if this is, if we're talking money that needs to be spent right now and can't go into the budget for next year, which it sounds like it still can.
It can.
You know, do we look at that as an option, or if there is a big need in the parks? And yeah, based on the question, I would go with parks. But my my other question was, when we bought the curbing machine, there was a possibility to buy an accessory for sidewalks. And I don't know if that would quicken the work or help us with the work because I know we'd still need the design part of it. But if if that option still exists, but ba- based on the question, the only project that this would work with right now is helping to beautify the parks. So, based on that, that's where I'm at. Sparkle, because you have everything identified already to move forward, you just need fu- fu- funding to keep going. So I would just say Sparkle. And the, like everyone else said, the other ones are kind of futile.
So what I hear is 1.7 million dollars allocated to the parks in some fashion there.
I got two sidewalks. Those who said parks without specifying, I added to existing, new, and Sparkle. So I got two sidewalks, three for exi- adding to existing parks, four for adding to new, six for Sparkle, and five for curbing.
All right. Does that give you the direction you're looking for?
You want me to pu- I, do you want me to split?
Why don't we go back and pull the people that already didn't choose parks, how they want their parks to be allocated?
Yeah, that was.
That's what I asked.
Yeah, so why don't we go back through the line? Parks, we either got Sparkle or additional landscaping. Is that what?
So we're only dealing with adding to existing parks, adding to new parks that need to be built to increase the landscaping or Sparkle. Those are the three options we're discussing.
Okay. Can I get a clarification on the Sparkle? Because originally, my understanding, which was in hindsight apparently wrong, was that Sparkle was beautification. And then the presentation we just got, it was capital improvements and million-dollar turf fields. So is there a caveat to this as far as it being beautification allocation part of the budget that it's Sparkle with a twist? Or is it just Sparkle and we can use it to do drain culverts as was presented in the?
Sparkle, Sparkle is.
I don't need a whole history. I just, that.
It's a program that we put forward to bring the 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 amenities that have been in our park system built under an old design template to the current design template. So we're, we're refreshing them, modernizing them, hardening them. We're putting metal roofs on them, you know, we're we're putting electronic locks and doors on them so they don't have to, you know, a ranger doesn't have to go to them. But it's bringing the older parks in the system to the newer design concepts for ease of operations and hardening for insurance and and whatnot.
So that was my, my, I guess, the the reason why I asked, because we're talking about in some instances, door locks and and gravel. And so if the intent here was beautification, sure, Sparkle in general. You're talking about pressure washing and that sort of thing, that would fall into that, but I just.
New, new, new roofs, you know, if you've driven by storm, you can see all the old roofing that, you know, is all now all metal roof. And includes, I mean, it's it's basically beautifying the park, but at the same time, we're adding to it the the things that we would build a park under today.
Okay. And then to my point again, just, and then what front it is, Crystal Lake, for example, to me, it screams a nature park essentially because there's not a lot of amenities, a very, very small playground. I don't even know that they're calling it that. I think it's a fitness station.
Yep.
And and a lot of sidewalks with very little landscaping, for example. So that was sort of the genesis of where I came with that. And and that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, Councilmember Cosden?
Sparkle.
We want to get in one. Sparkle.
Sparkle. Uh, Go-Bon Parks.
Sparkle.
Sparkle.
Sparkle. Okay.
Yeah.
All righty. Okay, let's move on to item eight, ordinances and resolutions. Eight A is public hearing, quasi judicial hearings. We do not have any listed. Item eight B is legislative public hearings. I believe we have two. First one of which is ordinance 35-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 35-24, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral, Florida comprehensive plan by amending the infrastructure element to provide consistency with the Cape Coral Water Supply Facilities Work Plan, adopting the 2023 Cape Coral Water Supply Facilities Work Plan as Appendix A to the comprehensive plan, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I now turn it over to Chad.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Plan Division. This is a very brief amendment. I don't have a presentation necessarily for you. Essentially, what this does is, five years ago, the comprehensive plan was amended to reflect the water supply work plan that was adopted with the South Florida Water Management District. It had some dates of around 2019. There was a new water supply work plan that was recently adopted. This change would literally just change those dates within the comprehensive plan to qualify us for future funding from the Water Management District.
Okay, thank you. I now open up public hearing for Trans Middle. Anyone wishing to speak on the ordinance 35-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance 35-24 for Trans Middle?
Motion to approve.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please read, or I'm sorry, please call the roll.
Shepherd? Steinecke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to resolution 162-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 162-24, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida formally adopting and approving the City of Cape Coral 2023 Water Supply Facilities Work Plan update. Which adopted and approved 2023 Water Supply Facilities Work Plan update shall be included and become part of the city's comprehensive plan, providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. This item was brought forward as a result of the Water Management District originally not including some of our alternative water supply grant funds, funding projects on their approved list. A resolution they adopted back in November of 2022 had language, specific language, that the city attorney believed that we needed to put this language into our resolution so we would be included on their eligibility list, which will be approved at the South Florida Water Management District Governing Board meeting tomorrow. I was originally scheduled to attend that meeting tomorrow. However, I got notice since I've been sitting in this meeting that we have been added back to their eligibility list, which is good news. But I think by adopting this resolution, moving forward with it, if in the future they tried to remove us from that list, we would have this in our back pocket. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open up the final public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution 162-24, please come forward. Seeing none, final public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding resolution 162-24?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinecke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item nine is reports. Councilmember Welsh, report.
No report, but I do want to make note that I am going to be out of town next week, so I'm requesting permission to be excused from the CTEC and the regular meeting.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right. Councilmember Carr, report.
Thank you. Just one thing, I had the privilege of attending Lee County Bar Association luncheon last week with some police department staff. An Officer Jarrett Bridges was awarded an Officer of the Year Award from the Lee County Bar Association, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cosden?
No report.
Member Hayden?
Just a reminder to people that the Mayor Scholarship Fund banquet is May 14th at 6:00 PM at Palmetto Pine, where 15 scholarships will be awarded to high school seniors, tech students, police and fire academies. Student tickets are available at the Cape Coral Mayor Scholarship Fund website. Thanks.
Councilmember Shepherd?
No report.
Councilmember Steinecke?
Thank you. Yes, just one thing. Yesterday, I attended the Yacht Club Design Review Public Meeting. Once again, hats off to staff to having everything all prepared. And hats off to Kimberly Horn for having made the modifications that came as a result of the very first meeting that we had. Those were illustrated and received well. We didn't have as many people there as I would have liked to have seen there. But but we were certainly prepared and they did a great presentation. And so hats off for that. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Real quickly, for me, last week, Thursday and Friday, I attended the Big Coalition Board Meeting over in Fort Lauderdale. A couple of things that came out of that. One thing, I think, is for staff. The other, you know, for council. One of the guest speakers in our in our meeting with the top 10 cities was the organization called Horizon 100. It's a organization that has top 100 CEOs throughout the state and actually throughout the country. And this is a board that was put together by Governor Scott, if I remember correctly. And what they have done in the last 12 to 18 months, they've come up with a economic development plan. And they've divided the state into six regions. Of course, we're one of the regions. And one of the things that they look at is opportunities for that particular region and how to bring in the larger businesses to to that particular region. So what I'd like to do, Mr. City Manager, I think it would be a, I do have a point of contact for this organization. I think it would be an excellent opportunity for our EDO manager to at least, they were going to, we kind of got a preview of a of a packet that their particular organization is going to get this week. They had a meeting this week. Once they have it with their board of directors, they would release that packet to us. So I'll be able to get that packet and give it to our EDO manager. And I think it would be a great opportunity for a follow-up conversation with that organization. I think it could benefit us in our EDO department. The other discussion that we had was the Big Coalition, the top 10 cities. They're going to be more active during the legislative session and really identifying properties, I'm sorry, issues that really impact the 10 cities. And they will become a voice and will have a, take a position during our legislative action days or during session. So that's something that we're going to start this legislative session. Last thing I wanted to mention, in in light of the city manager's approach with staff. I know we had discussions with our 101s, maybe after the consent agenda, staff may not be, they may be excused. I had a discussion with our city auditor the other day as well. I've been here six and a half years and I can be honest, I never remember an opportunity where a council had a question for her at any point during the council meeting. She's here every single meeting. So my question to council is, even though she's available to us at all times, we can contact her the next day, unless she has an item on the agenda or if there is a possibly something that the finance department has on the agenda, I don't really see a need for her sitting around. So my recommendation is to maybe have the same approach that the city manager has, where if there's not something on the agenda that is a direct reflection to the audit department, then then why have her sit here? She's available at any time with a phone call if we happen to have that discussion. So, that was my suggestion. I wanted to bring it before council to make sure everyone else is comfortable with that, have any issues. So, everybody okay with that, with that type of approach?
Yep.
Okay.
Are you saying the auditor after the consent agenda as well, or not at all?
Well, unless she has an item on the agenda, she said that she, you know, she'd be watching the meeting. But, you know, she wouldn't be here unless she either has a agenda on the item, on the agenda, or if the finance department had an item on the agenda. the agenda that she thought that it would be important for her to be here.
Okay.
She's a professional. She knows if she needs to be here or not. So, you, you're okay with that? All right. All righty then, I, I did speak with her, uh, yesterday, I believe it was, on that, and I will get back to her and, and, uh, let her know I spoke to council, and that's the direction, uh, we'll utilize moving forward. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, uh, does it say something in our charter that, that, uh, I was just sitting here-
This is the first I'm hearing about it. Um, assuming you all agree, and barring I don't find any prohibition, if there is, I'll bring it back to you.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'm looking at, I'm trying to look it up real quick, and, and I know that there's a city manager component. So, if I find something, I will immediately let you all know via electronic communication.
Okay, sounds great. Mr. City Manager, or Mr. City Attorney, you got a report?
Uh, nothing than what I've already conveyed to you, either in person or via email.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
No report, thank you.
All right. With that being said, uh, time and place of future meeting, we have a regular meeting in the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, March fifteenth at 2024, beginning at 4:30 PM in council chambers. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.